Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, February 9th, 2010. This time we'll call the meeting to order. Our pledge of allegiance this evening and flag ceremony will be conducted by Boy Scouts from various troops throughout the greater Cano Valley area. Gentlemen, it's all ears.
Color Guard advance. All those in uniforms salute. All others, please place your right hand over your heart. Will the audience please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, deliberate, and justice for all. Color Guard, prepare to post the colors. Color Guard, post the colors. Color Guard salute. Two. Audience attendees, color guard dismissed.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Glancy?
Here.
Councilmember Fox is absent at this time. Mayor Gillette?
Item four, request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item consent calendar seven H. Service agreement has been removed. Nothing further. Thank you. Special presentations and announcements, item five. To begin our special presentation section of the council meeting this evening, please give me a moment to step down to the podium. exceptional job serving our nation's youth for 100 years. The Boy Scouts of America have created a foundation of leadership, service, and community for millions of America's youth. This year, they are celebrating their 100th anniversary, an important milestone that has merited a two-year celebration. We have with us this evening Bill Cole, District Committee Chair for the Cano Valley, who will tell us more about Boy Scouting in the Cano Valley. Bill? Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's all ears. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and fellow residents, thank you for honoring our Cano Valley District Eagle Scouts tonight. The Eagle Scout Award is the highest award available to youth members of the Boy Scouts of America. The award represents many years of dedicated effort and the successful completion of a long process which starts when a young man joins Boy Scouts. It is a great achievement for all parties involved, the scout, his family, his unit, and our community. It is a demonstration of how people working together can truly help mold a young man with a solid sense of leadership, citizenship, and responsibility. In the greater Cano Valley area, we have almost 90 units with approximately 1,800 scouts from Tiger Cubs up through Eagle Scout age and another 1,400-plus adult scouters. Some of them, like many of us here tonight, no longer have children still active in the program, but we are still involved. At this time, I would like all Eagle Scouts in the audience to please rise.
It's an opportunity to congratulate the Boy Scouts and the Eagle Scouts and all the aspects of scouting on this anniversary. Let me add my compliments to our local scouts. They do an exceptional job of working with the community and providing support in numerous areas. One of the high points of being able to serve on this council is that a number of us try, whenever possible, to attend the Eagle Scout Honor Courts and help congratulate these young men and their families on their accomplishments because it's not something in this day and age that comes easy. It takes a lot of time, effort, and energy and commitment to the community, and we're very, very proud of their accomplishments. This time, I'd like to present you with this commendation in honor of the Boy Scouts of America 100th anniversary. The Boy Scouts of America, BSA, founded in 1910 as part of the tradition that produces leaders in the community as celebrating its 100th anniversary in America. And the BSA started in Ventura County in 1920 and in the Cano Valley in 1960, embracing community service and fostering skill development in all aspects of intellectual, spiritual, and vocational growth. And over the past 100 years, the BSA has grown from one troop to a magnitude of troops serving over 2.8 million youth across the nation, providing volunteer opportunities to both youth and adults. And young men who have experienced scouting have been known to walk on the moon, serve as the President of the United States, and become leaders in the business, educational, and civic, and volunteer sectors of their communities. And the Boy Scouts of America, in an outstanding youth development program in our community, is witnessed by all of those that have earned the highest rank in scouting, the Eagle Badge, and those that were scouts as youths. And I'd insert with this something, and I stopped doing this, but it's just of particular interest what the scouts learn, especially with the scout law, as they interact in a very complex society, looking at people and individuals, and I can't help it, they trust that they know the people they're dealing with are, in fact, trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Once you learn it, you never forget it. Now therefore, I, Dennis C. Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend the Boy Scouts of America for its outstanding contributions to the community and congratulate the movement on its 100th anniversary. Again, congratulations. I should mention also, this evening, when I know you'd all like to stay for this meeting because it's always riveting, but if you have to leave, there will be some city staff near the door to present each of you with a City of Thousand Oaks shield, a pin, which has been authorized for the wearing on the Boy Scout uniform by the Ventura County Council of the Boy Scouts of America. Our second presentation is always adds a lighthearted note to our evening. We're recognizing another very special day, the 106th birthday of Dr. Seuss. Is Colleen here?
Yes.
Where is she? I missed your hat. I'm sorry. I missed your hat. The 106th birthday of Dr. Seuss. Read Across America Day is celebrated on March 2nd, and this is also Dr. Seuss's birthday. The National Education Association sponsors events during this period to inspire reading in children throughout our schools and communities. I'd like to introduce someone who's certainly no stranger to this chamber and especially once a year at this time, Colleen Briner Schmidt, President of the Unified Association of Canoe Teachers, who will tell us more about the importance of reading in our children's lives. Colleen, welcome.
That Steve I am, that Steve I am. I do not like that Steve I am. That Steve thinks he is just so cool because he learned to read in a Cano Valley school.
Do you like to read all day?
I do not like to, Steve, I say. Would you read books here or there? I would not read books here or there. I would not read books anywhere. I do not like to read all day. I do not like to read, I say.
Would you read books in a house? Would you read books to a mouse? Would you read books in a box? Would you read with Mr. Fox? I know you read. Well, I'll even bet you'd like to read with Mayor Gillette.
Not in a house, not to a mouse, not in a box, not with Mr. Fox. Keep those books in a set. I will not read with Mayor Gillette.
Come on, reading is fun. It will tickle your fancy. Would you read with Mr. Glancy? Books are amazing. They put your mind in a whirlwind. Come read a book with Mrs. Irwin. The excitement is there. It's hard to contain ya if you only will read with Mrs. Bill De La Peña.
It is not fun. It is not fancy. I will not read with Mr. Glancy, nor Mrs. Bill De La Peña or Mrs. Irwin. I don't care what they've been doing.
Now, you don't like to read, or so you say. Try it, try it, and you may. Try reading, and you may, I say.
Steve, if you will let me be, I will try to read, and you will see. Say, I like to read this book. I do. I do, I think I'm hooked. Find all the books that you can get. I want to read with Mayor Gillette. Hurry now, or I'll get antsy. I can't wait to read with Mr. Glancy. I will read books in a house. I will read books with a mouse. In a box with Mr. Fox, I'll get stirring with Mrs. Irwin. You've tried hard. I really don't blame you. I can't wait to read with Mrs. De La Peña. I will read books here and there. I will read books everywhere. I even like to read about him. So, thank you, thank you, Steve I am. I'm here today with my Read Across America Chair, Erin Cardam. And Read Across America, in cooperation with the California Teachers Association and the National Education Association, was conceived as a way to focus on the fun of reading. Jim Tralise once said, "No child stays up all night to read a reading worksheet under the bed with a flashlight, under the covers with a flashlight." They do that because they are hooked on books and they want to read because it opens up a whole new world. So we encourage everyone to strengthen the passion and to share their own passion of reading with children throughout the country on this Read Across America Day. And to promote this, UAC, the Unified Association of Canoe Teachers, and the Thousand Oaks Library will be holding a Read Across America event at the Thousand Oaks Library on March 2nd. We encourage children of all ages to come and listen to celebrity readers, to do some crafts, and even meet the Cat in the Hat. It's a time to celebrate all that's good about books and great about reading. As we know, you're never too old, too wild, too wacky, too wild, to pick up a book to read to a child.
You're never too busy, too cool, or too hot to pick up a book and share what you've got.
In schools and communities, let's gather around. Let's pick up a book, let's pass it around.
There are kids all around you, kids who will need someone to hug and someone to read.
So come join us on March 2nd at the library across the way.
And make this America's Read to Kids Day.
And for each of the council members, we have a Read Across America poster. And this year's theme is Armadillo Chili, based on the book by Helen Kettelman and Will Terry. And to that effect, we have a chili mug for you, Mayor Gillette.
Thank you so very much. Beautiful. Good book. Sir, oh, good. Very good. The Mini Me is a nice addition. Never mind. We'll talk about that later. At this time, it's my honor to present this proclamation in honor of Read Across America Day. Read Across America Day, a national celebration, is scheduled for March 2nd, 2010. And the Cano Valley Unified School District and the United Association of Canoe Teachers co-sponsor this event to promote reading literacy for all students. And Read Across America Day celebrates what would have been the 106th birthday of the beloved children storyteller, Dr. Seuss. And Read Across America Day promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students. Now therefore, I, Dennis Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim March 2nd, 2010, as Read Across America Day, and urge students to join our local teachers and administrators in this important event. Thank you all for coming down this evening.
Thank you so much.
Colleen, it's good seeing you again. Steve, well done. Congratulations. Item six, the public comments section of the agenda this evening. Would the city clerk please call item six?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or in a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearing shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Three people have presented cards and pursuant to council standard, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening will be Richard Elsley, followed by Cheryl Heineck.
It is my honor and pleasure to be here this evening to tell you about the next event in the Discovery Center's Science Speaker Series, which is going to be Thursday evening, February 11th. The purpose of the Science Speaker Series is to bring in scientists who will talk about important current issues and do it at a level that anyone in the general public can understand and enjoy, sometimes almost as enjoyable as the presentation we had here a moment ago. The subject this time is going to be what's happening to planet Earth? As of last week, there are now 6.8 billion people on this planet. They're all drinking water and eating food and using energy. How is the Earth holding up under this load? And what are some things that perhaps we can do differently in the future in order to help? The event is at 7:30 Thursday evening at Baxter Biosciences on Lakeview Canyon in Westlake Village. Mission is $15 for adults, $10 for students, seniors, and teachers. And you can find out more information at our website, which is science speakerseries.org. Science speakerseries.org. So everyone, please come and join us Thursday evening.
Thank you very much. I don't believe so. Next speaker is Cheryl Heineck, followed by Chuck Consel.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette, council, and all the residents. I'm Cheryl Heineck of Thousand Oaks, and this is my sidekick, Marty Schwam. And I am the coordinator of Cano Valley Community Crop Walk. And that's right, I said "community." I love our community events that we have scheduled, the art shows, the Arbor Day, birthday celebration, Cano Valley Days, which I think is coming back. And my favorite one is One City, One Book, and just like Dr. Seuss, that's awesome. I love discussing the soloists with my neighbors. So why not have a brisk city walk? And that city walk would address three needs. It would address weight problems facing adults and children. It supports humanitarian needs. And it supports five local charities, Manah, Two Meals on Wheels programs, Lutheran Social Services, which helps with the winter shelter and the summer meal programs, and also Catholic charities. Amazingly, this opportunity has been here for over 30 years, and many local citizens have already taken advantage of it. But I'm aiming for expansion. It is the Cano Valley Community Crop Walk, and CROP stands for Communities Responding to Overcome Poverty. There are over 2,000 community walks nationwide, and the donations support the work of church, world service. Yet 25% of what we raise yearly returns to support our five local charities. Last year, we raised over $52,000 and had about 700 walkers from teams of schools, churches, synagogues, and clubs. And that meant that over five, our five local charities, shared over $13,000. Not bad for a day's walk. Our six- or four-mile walk is on Sunday, March 7th. It begins and ends at Cal Lutheran University. There's also a 20-minute campus stroll, so no excuses, please. CLU is celebrating its 50th anniversary, so they are rounding up a 15-member walking team. Walkers get envelopes for donations and bring to the day of registration on the walk. So here's the challenge. I'm passing out to each of you an invitation and a walker's envelope. Let's create a City of Thousand Oaks team. The world will thank you, five local charities will thank you, your body will thank you, and I will thank you. So here are your envelopes, and any unused ones, please return them to Mayor Gillette. Thank you very much. See you March 7th.
Thank you very much, ladies. Our final speaker, Mr. Chuck Consel. Good evening, Mr. Consel.
Well, good evening, Dennis. Happy to see all you guys. I haven't been down here in a long time. I just wanted to let everybody know that...
Chuck, you want to get closer to the microphone?
Yes, thanks. Let everybody know that two longtime friends of mine, Eloise Sina and Dan Del Campo, are moving back into town and are ready to run for the... That's a joke. For the old timers. That's not true. That's just a joke. I see Andy smiling, that's always good. But anyhow, I'm just here briefly. We got an issue, I think it's a city issue. It's not a minor thing, it's a real thing. We don't have a 24-hour pharmacy in this town. And I don't know whether any of you have experienced any of that, but, and I don't know whether it's a county issue, or a state issue, or a city issue, but I think it should be our issue because we don't have an all-night pharmacy available from, I think they have one in Oxnard, and they have one in Thousand Oaks, down in Topanga. No, well, not Topanga, Woodland Hills. So anybody that needs to get a refill has to go to, you know, 20 miles this way or 20 miles that way. There used to be one in Simi, but they've closed that. So now, and I don't know whether you guys want to discuss, talk about this at all, but I think it's a legit thing, especially for seniors. You know, for someone that needs a refill on a farm, it's almost kind of an emergency sort of thing. So for someone to have to get up in the middle of the night, there's no place to get a refill on a... And this was, this was brought on by an incident where, you know, I have grandchildren, so one of them got sick and they needed it, so in the middle of the night, they had to go down. And there's numerous kinds of incidents like this. So I would hope you guys would just pay attention to this. I know you're all, you're all very responsive, and I think it's something that we really need because there is nothing out there from, you know, I mean, it's a vast area. And people just, and Andy, I know you're a proactive kind of guy, and Dennis is too, and all of you. So hopefully, we can maybe get, you know, something open here in town. We're local, so, and let's, you know, so that's why I'm here. Thank you much.
Thank you very much, Chuck, and we'll, we'll get an answer to you. That concludes, that concludes our public comments section. Item seven, Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. What is the pleasure of the council? This is Bill De La Peña.
I would like to pull item seven F, F as in Frank. And if no further objection, remove, I mean, move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Thank you. And in announced at, under item four, at the beginning, seven H has been removed from consent. Okay. Okay, we have seven... Oh, and we also have a supplement to seven C. I'm sorry, what is seven, what was the one you wanted? Seven F. I have the rest of the calendar to move, comments to the motion, there being none, everything but seven F, or seven C? Please vote.
Seven F.
Seven F. 7F, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 7F, Mrs. De La Penya.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. I just had a quick question. I saw that the amount of $2 million, that at least a portion of that is included in the 2009 and '10 budget, and it is nonetheless deemed an additional appropriation. I was wondering if that could be explained to me.
Mr. Watkins.
Certainly, the way this is shown in the council report, actually, 1.8 million was included in the budget. So that's not an additional appropriation. It's the remainder above that that we ask for appropriation for. So it's not, it's not the entire $2 million being appropriated.
Okay. And the remainder then would be approximately, it's a little more than $200,000?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And I move to adopt 7F.
Our motion for 7F, comments to the motion, there being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0, and the ordinance title is an ordinance amending Section 1-5.8 of Chapter 5 of Title 1 of the Code regarding enforcement officers and adding Section 5-8.11 of Chapter 8 of Title 5 regarding encroachments onto public lands.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I, I got, you got away from me there. I was looking for, we had--
I was--
Motion on 7F on the one remaining item on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Right?
And, I'm sorry, I was reading the title for I.
8A.
For the consent calendar.
I'm sorry, I hadn't requested that yet. I was trying to finish up 7, consent calendar. We're done with that now? Okay. And you were reading 8A?
I was actually reading the title for 7I, which I didn't read in your previous motion.
Okay.
So the consent calendar's done.
The ordinance for second reading, that's done. Does that take, does that take a separate motion? It does? Okay, so it's, we're done with 7I. Okay, we're done with the consent calendar. Okay. Item 8A, public hearings. Would the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 8A, an appeal of the Planning Commission decision to deny Trailer Park major modification 2006-70686, closure impact report, and relocation assistance adjustment for proposed closure of Caneo Mobile Home Park, and final negative declaration number 274. The appellant applicant is 1200 Newberry LLC, located at 1200 Newberry Road. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Fourteen people have presented speaker cards and pursuant to council standards. The applicant-appellant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal. The remaining speakers are allowed three minutes each. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Report by Mr. Specter, senior planner. Mr. Specter, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. We're here tonight to hear an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny the impact report for closure of Caneo Mobile Home Park and related matters. The applicant's asking the council to grant the appeal and thereby approve the closure impact report and an adjustment to the relocation assistance and a negative declaration. This is an aerial view of Caneo Mobile Home Park, taken from directly above. And this is a view of the park in an oblique view. As far as some statistics regarding the park, there are 49 mobile home spaces. Most of these, the mobile homes on these spaces are owner-occupied. We have a couple of second homes that are not the primary residence as we understand it. We have 11 homes that are occupied by renters. These are third parties that do not own their mobile homes. And then there are five, or at least five, because this does change, units that are owned by the park itself. Many of the mobile homes in this park are at least 40 years old, and the rents are relatively low, ranging from a little over 300 to a little over 800 a month, as indicated in the impact report. The increases allowable, increases in rent for these spaces are controlled by the city's mobile home rent stabilization ordinance. The general plan designation for the property is mobile home exclusive, and zoning is trailer park development. One of the items that's important to note regarding this whole issue is that most of the homes cannot really be relocated to another mobile home park within the vicinity. The reasons being lack of space in nearby parks, restrictions on the age and condition of mobile homes that are allowed in those parks, and likely damage in, in the event of relocation due to the condition of the homes. I'd like to give you a very brief history of events that have occurred surrounding this There was a moratorium adopted by the city on park closures back in January of 2006. There was an amendment to the municipal code that was adopted in March of 2006 concerning park closures and related matters. And in December of that year, the applicant filed this closure application. And then in December of 2007, the, the council directed staff and appointed Councilmember Fox to mediate or to facilitate, facilitate negotiations between the park owner and the tenants of the park. Unfortunately, the tenants and the owner were unable to reach an agreement on the relocation assistance that the tenants were asking for. A little more history, in January of 2008, the moratorium on mobile home park closures ended. And then in July of 2008, there was a proposed valid initiative that the city council adopted that pertained to all mobile home parks in the city. It changed the general plan land use designation for all of those parks to mobile home exclusive, and it changed the zoning to trailer park development, and it amended the city's municipal code to require the owner to make certain relocation assistance available to displaced That initiative that changed the municipal code would require payment equal to a lump sum, equal to the in-place market value of each mobile home, plus a payment equal to the first and last month's rent and security deposit in alternative rental housing, and the cost of moving each household. It also set a minimum payment for assistance to be no less than required for government actions under California relocation assistance law. At this point, I would, it's my pleasure to ask the city attorney to give you a synopsis of the issues concerning the litigation pertaining to this case.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public and staff, during this part of the presentation, I will be discussing the litigation history and legal issues involved in the July 2008 ordinance, as well as this closure for Caneo Mobile Home Park. In February 2009, the applicant filed a suit in Ventura County Superior Court against the city under SEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, as well as bringing an inverse condemnation action and other damages claims against the city. The city settled the SEQA suit by agreeing to bring the Caneo Mobile Home Park closure application to a hearing by July 2009. The damages case, which is still pending, has to do with the effect of the July 2008 ordinance on the park closure. The Planning Commission did conduct a hearing in June 2009 on the closure application and denied the application. And the appellant timely appealed, the applicant, I'm sorry, the park owner timely appealed the commission's decision. In August 2009, the city filed a lawsuit against the Caneo Mobile Home Park in the Ventura County Superior Court, seeking a court decision on what their limits there were on relocation assistance. The county, city council authorized this lawsuit based on the following. The city had been sued by the park owner, and after numerous hearings on various motions in that lawsuit, it became very clear that the issue of relocation assistance payments was at the very heart of the matter. It was also obvious that at the Planning Commission hearing on the closure, that the park owner, tenant, and city all had widely differing opinions on what real, what reasonable cost of relocation entailed. What did the park owner actually have to pay? Based on this history, the council filed suit in Superior Court against the park, seeking the court's guidance on relocation assistance. And the council even postponed the September hearing on the applicant's appeal, pending the court's decision. The issue is reasonable cost of relocation. Under California law, relocation assistance, the governing body, which is the city council, can require and condition the closure that the park owner mitigate the effects of displacement on mobile home park residents. And that the relocation assistance to displaced residents, however, must not exceed, in quotes, "the reasonable cost of relocation." And that is not defined in the statute, and that is the question that really we brought in front of the court. So in essence, what we did is we asked the city, basically asked the court, and stated, "We believe this statute that I was just talking about means that the park owner has to pay in-place value of a mobile home if it cannot be moved." And as Mr. Specter mentioned in an earlier slide, most of the, if not all of the, mobile homes in the park would not be eligible to be moved because there's no place to move them, and because of their age. So we said to the court, "The city believes that in-place value has to be paid." On the other hand, the park owner believes that all has, that all the park owner needs to pay for closure is the actual relocation cost. And basically, we then said, and this is all in the court pleadings, "Court, please tell us who's right. Give us direction on what we should do." The park owners, the city, and the tenants, through an attorney, were all submitted legal briefs to the court on the issue. There was a full administrative record of everything having to do with this particular closure application, of over 1,800 pages submitted to the court. There was a half-day court hearing heard on just this issue of what relocation assistance meant. And in early, that hearing was heard in December of 2009, and in early January, the court issued its decision. The court did go through the legislative history of the particular statute, and in the end sided with the park owner's interpretation of the statute. The court found favor with the argument, which was part of the legislative history, that payment of in-place value of the coach is dislocation cost or a consequence of the closure, but not a cost of relocating the coach. In a footnote, the court also opined that the cost of buying into a new mobile home park is not contemplated by the statute either. Therefore, the court basically stated that the city cannot require relocation assistance that exceeded the reasonable cost of relocation, the words in the statute. And that the council and the city had exceeded its authority in requiring payment of in-place market value for the mobile homes. Also, the court, which was more a minor issue, stated that there, we could not require payment to be equal to or greater than that required by governmental action under California relocation assistance law, which was also part of the initiative adopted in July 2008. After the court decision was issued, council considered whether to pursue an appeal to the appellate court. Council was strongly advised to follow the Superior Court judge's decision based on a number of reasons. Even prior to the initiative being adopted in July 2008, the city's code stated that one factor in determining relocation costs was the in-place market value of a mobile home. At that time, tenants advocated that they were entitled to this in-place market value and should receive the same, even though the ordinance was not mandatory on this point. In December 2007, the tenants were told that there was an open legal question on whether a park owner would have to pay in-place value for relocation cost, and cautioned that it may not be in their best interest for a court to decide the issue. In part, because of this uncertainty, and because of the pending closure application, the council authorized Councilmember Fox to act as a mediator on the closure issue. Over several months, Councilmember Fox, with senior staff, worked diligently with the park owner and the tenant's attorney to mediate a settlement for the park closure. Unfortunately, a settlement was not reached. City council and the public was again reminded that there was a legal question over validity of requiring the payment of in-place value during a city council meeting in July 2008, when discussing the legal implications of the then-proposed initiative. The council did adopt the initiative in July 2008 rather than placing it on the ballot. The very reason the city council filed suit in August was to receive guidance from the court on what really is just a question of law. What does the statute allow for relocation payments? Since the city sought this guidance from the court, then it is reasonable and prudent to follow the court's decision. The judge's reasoning, even if you disagree with it, is not irrational or out of left field. The judge based his decision on the words of the statute, and therefore, council was advised to follow it. This office consulted with other attorneys involved in mobile home litigation. We were represented by outside attorneys through the litigation. Unfortunately, mobile home park cases are being decided against cities in both California state courts and the federal courts. As we discussed during the Vallesito conversion hearing, the appellate courts are siding with park owners. Cities throughout California have been hit with multimillion-dollar damage claims and judgments. Thousand Oaks is still in litigation with the park owner over this closure. And delaying a decision in this matter, in the closure park application, while waiting for an appeal, would likely cost the city millions of dollars. In closed session, council followed staff's strong recommendations to not pursue an appeal of the trial court's decision on a four-to-one vote, with Councilmember Bill De La Penya dissenting, based on all the foregoing, the history of this particular application, the attempts at reaching a settlement, defending the current lawsuit, the city filing its own lawsuit in August asking the court for guidance, the court's reasoned decision, and the huge financial risk to the city. This concludes my part of the presentation, and the city manager will now address the council.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Any questions to the city attorney? I'm sorry, just a minute. I'm sorry, just a minute. Okay, I'm advised to go through the whole process, then we'll come back for staff questions. The city manager, Helen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you've heard from the planning staff and the city attorney. You've read the report. You know the background of this case. You understand the legal situation that we find ourselves in. Before we get into the questions, the speakers, and the applicant, and the appellate, or excuse me, the applicant, so on, I just wanted to remind the council and those who are here today that coming up with the recommendations that the city attorney had to come up with was not an easy task. We did have to weigh the pros and cons and do a risk assessment as to the likely outcome of appealing this decision. And the odds are not in the city's favor. In fact, the chances of prevailing with an appeal are very slim to none. And the exposure to us financially is in the millions to tens of millions of dollars based on other court cases. And it just, the risks were way too great. Financially, we simply can't afford it. And that was the risk assessment. So the management of this organization stood behind the city attorney's office and their recommendation. I do also want to remind everyone that the city of Thousand Oaks is really on the cutting edge and the forefront of supporting mobile home park tenants. We have a history going back over 35 years with some of the most progressive local laws on the books. That's how we got to the court situation that we found ourselves. And our rent stabilization ordinance, which was adopted in 1980, was at the time and remains to this day one of the most restrictive in the state, if not the country. And in the subsequent ordinances and actions and moratoriums taken by the council in order to protect the mobile home park tenants, really, they speak volumes, and we are in the forefront of this effort. And I just want to stress for council, and the public, that this council has an impressive track record. And in addition, the city council has put its money where its mouth is, so to speak, with respect to the over 250 loans and grants that were provided by the redevelopment agency to mobile home park, excuse me, mobile tenants to rehab their units, over a million and a half dollars in the last 10 years alone. So there's been a lot of money and investment from the local taxpayers to this community, to this class of residents. And the list goes on with respect to the types of support. So it's been a very tough process. We've agonized over it. The judge and the Superior Court has spoken. You understand what's in front of you, and those are the comments that I wanted to make. And with that, we'll go on with the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mittmick. Any further staff comment?
Yes, I just have...
Mr. Specter.
Thank you. I just have a few more slides to go over to wrap this up. Based on what you've heard, it's not surprising that staff is recommending that the city council approve the closure impact report, subject to conditions of approval. These conditions include a minimum notice of termination tenancy of six months. This is, as opposed to 24 months that was in the original mobile home park initiative. In a different case, the court struck down that two-year requirement. That's just facts of the case. And also, the conditions of approval are setting forth relocation assistance to mobile homeowners we believe in conformity with the court decision. The relocation assistance that's required is described in Condition of Approval Number Nine. That condition requires that unless the park owner and the tenant agree to alternative assistance, the park owner shall pay each owner-occupant an amount given in the impact report that depends on the option that the owner-occupant might select. Option one would allow for a payment where the tenant would receive $14,000-plus to $16,000-plus to relocate a single wide, and $17,800 to $19,331 for a double wide. The reason for the range is there's a different payment depending on the number of people in the household that has to be moved. Option two would be the same as option one, but the tenant would be able to simply sell their mobile home to a third party, who would then remove the home. Option three, the tenant would receive 90% of the payments in option one and live rent-free for six months if the tenant agrees to move out after six months. There is a disagreement here concerning the assistance for those people who do not live in the home, but they rent to a third party. The applicant asserts that these mobile homeowners are eligible, are not eligible to receive this assistance. There's a good summary provided in one of the supplemental memos of this matter, and it shows that these mobile homeowners are eligible to receive this assistance. And so, Condition Nine requires the park to pay these mobile homeowners $12,000-plus for single wides and $14,500 roughly for a double-wide mobile home. Another item that needs to be ruled on is the question of a relocation assistance adjustment. The reason for the relocation assistance adjustment is to protect, to prevent, a taking of property in accordance with the state and federal constitutions. In this case, we believe that an adjustment is inappropriate because the request was not filed in a timely manner, supporting evidence in the form of an expert report was not provided. And most importantly, in the worst-case scenario, an assistance payment, assistance payments of $650,000, depending on the impact report options selected, is a reasonable amount compared to the value of the property, which is more than $5 million. This particular case was subject to environmental review and a negative declaration. An initial study was done that demonstrates that the project will not have a significant effect on the environment. So based on all the foregoing, it is staff's recommendation that the council adopt the resolution that's attached in the staff report and thereby adopt Negative Declaration Number 274, approve the closure impact report, subject to conditions of approval, and deny the relocation assistance adjustment. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Specter. Move to questions of staff. Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Ms. Gillette. Ms. Albano referenced that council had asked that I act on behalf of the city council mediating the issue between the park owner and the residence attorney, who was represented by Mr. Richard Francis. I don't know if Mr. Francis is here this evening. While I do plan on making comments relative to this, I'd like the city attorney to advise both the council and the public of the nature of mediation and the confidentiality that's involved. And because of that, I'm going to be precluded from discussing many things that, while I'd like to discuss, I'm going to be precluded from doing that this evening. So, Ms. Albano, could you just briefly provide the residents watching at home, those here in the council, the conditions of our mediation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Mayor, with your pleasure. Thank you. The mediation is governed by state law, as well as we did confidentiality agreements with all of the tenants and with the park owner. And basically, it means that what's exchanged during the mediation, the discussions during the mediation, are kept confidential. The purpose is to, so that, the reason there is confidentiality, I'm sorry, confidentiality, is so that people will be free to speak their minds, in the hope that the mediator can build consensus, find some uniformity, and be able to move on from there. And that did take place within this setting. It was a confidential process. And I believe that Mr. Fox, who is, has experience and a degree in this area, knows that he can't speak to particulars having to do with the mediation, although can speak in a more global matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Okay, additional questions of staff? Ms. Bill De La Peña, I'll come back to you. You had asked earlier, do you still have a question or you want to get into the speaker cards? Okay, please.
Thank you. I wanted staff to clarify something. We have something in our supplemental packet regarding the applicant's attorney requesting a correction perhaps on the definition of mobile home park residence, or interpretation, I should say, and how does that weigh on the recommendation that all mobile homeowners receive some sort of reimbursement?
Ms. Bill De La Peña, I believe the city attorney will respond to that, if that's... Okay, Ms. Albano?
Sorry, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and public. The applicant's attorney's letter is, which was written from the Hart King Colton Law Firm, signed by Mr. Hill, is part of the supplemental. And Mr. Specter did allude to this in his presentation. We disagree with them in part, and let me explain that. They raised the issue that, and they raised this at the Planning Commission level and in their impact report, that non-resident owners, and we're talking about a group of 11 people, based on the information in the impact report, are not entitled to relocation assistance. We totally disagree. The supplemental lays out what the law says and why we believe they are covered under the definition of mobile home resident. In the letter, they go on to suggest that also sub-tenants are not, and that means a non-resident owner is renting to someone else, and we call them the sub-tenants, that they're not entitled to relocation. We do agree with that. None of the conditions require any payments to a sub-tenant. So the staff's recommendation that was here, as well as, I believe it was even the recommendation at the Planning Commission level, but the recommendation here is that the owners of mobile homes, whether they are a resident or a non-resident, are entitled to relocation assistance, but they are different. Condition Nine spells out, in the second part of it, a different amount for non-resident owners. They are limited to $12,000-plus for a single wide, and I don't have the figure right in front of me. We just stated what it was for a, sorry, for a double wide. If I can get there, I will tell you.
I believe it is.
$14,501 for a double wide. So that's our position. We believe that it's valid under the law. And the supplemental, which is dated February 9th, and in tonight's green packet, does quote the different definitions out of the law.
Thank you. Now, about those mobile homeowners, if they hold a mortgage and now are forced to basically give up their units since it may not be movable, what happens to those homeowners who own a coach and yet still are paying mortgage and are receiving $12,000, whatever it may be, and have a mortgage still outstanding? What happens?
You know, unfortunately, what the court stated, and really, I think this is accurate, is the legislature has chosen a balancing act here and decided that it is not the park owner's responsibility to pay or to reimburse or somehow make the mobile home coach-owner made whole. And that was part of the issue of why going to the court. So I can understand why people would not be happy with that decision, but we did argue that, briefed it to the trial court. But unfortunately, the language of the statute says what the mitigation measures cannot be more than the, quote, "reasonable cost of relocation," and that the consequences of the closure on what happens to that person financially is not in the judge's opinion. And then, based on the language of the statute, a reasonable cost of relocation.
Thank you. I understand that the judge struck a few portions of our ordinance, of the original ordinance, even before additional portions were added as part of the initiative. There are, such as, the relocation for two years, and it's now moved up to six months. That is one of the areas that was changed, correct? That was part of the initial or original ordinance?
When the council adopted the new relocate, new, I'm sorry, closure ordinance, which was, I believe, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was in March of 2006, one of the things the council did specifically debate was what time period should be given for closures or the notice provisions. And the council did, at that time, set it for two years. When the initiative came forward, so we'll call that the July 2008 ordinance, it kept some of the same sections and it made amendments. It didn't change that two years. We were sued in a separate lawsuit brought in October of 2008 on the initiative and how, and different provisions of it. And one of the provisions attacked was that notice period. And the trial court, in a separate decision, not in this Canejo case, or the case the city brought, but in a case involving Vallesito, the court did strike that provision. Just as now, in essence, the court has, based on the judgment that the city submitted on his written ruling, the court, in essence, has struck the requirement to pay in-place market value. There's been some other parts of the ordinance that have been struck as well.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that. The ordinance, what was not struck, was a requirement within a 20-mile radius, is my understanding. That is still, Judge Reiser was kind enough to still allow that in that ordinance. However, when I am looking at the closure report, the letter from the management company states, who will be handling all of these relocation issues, states that they have looked at parks all over, even in Orange County. We know that parks in Orange County are not within a 20-mile radius, it's 150-mile radius. And I wonder whether that can actually be deemed complete, when in fact, they didn't, they went beyond the 20-mile radius and went to 150 miles in their search, and did not stick to what the ordinance said, which was 20 miles.
Actually, you have to applaud the park owner for going through the process of not just looking at 20 miles. I don't mean that in an unsympathetic or empathetic way, to one side or the other, but they went beyond what our ordinance said because state law doesn't set a limit. So they, when they wrote their impact report, they're playing to two audiences in the sense of they're complying with our statute, our ordinance, and they have to comply with state law. State law doesn't set that limit. Therefore, an argument could be made that if they didn't consider things beyond that, then someone could challenge that the impact report didn't satisfy the confines of state law. So they are working to two things. You're right, the issue of the 20 miles wasn't part of the lawsuit that we were involved in. The lawsuit that we brought was very, very limited. And whether, and at this point, it almost doesn't, it really doesn't matter anymore because the court said you can't order in-place value. I mean, so in some ways, the 20 miles doesn't really mean much. But the bottom line is, my understanding, and is that the impact report shows, there really is nowhere for people to move. There's no really availability, and because of the age of these mobile homes, they can't be moved. So what the council really is faced with is, does the, what is the cost of reasonable relocation going to be? relocation going to be? And that's what's conditioned in condition nine, and that's why we actually talk about money being paid. So the impact report is complete.
Does the impact report, thank you, does the impact report have to be complete, but can contain factual errors, or can it not contain factual errors?
We know that there, the impact report, we don't believe contains any factual errors that affect your ability to make a decision. There have been, we have received some emails, and I think there is a couple in the supplemental or in the packets that say, we don't agree with the impact report with this fact sheet on what, whether my home is a single wide or a double wide. That's why the conditions are written the way they are. The conditions don't say the mobile home owner is, has to pay what's on page 10, or 15, or 20, or whatever of the impact report. What it says is, if the mobile home is a single wide, this is what you get paid depending on how many in your household. If it's a double wide, this is what you get. There's three options, the resident gets to pick that option. So the fact that there may be inaccurate information doesn't really affect the impact report. And the impact report, some of that information was only as good as what public records show it to be, and they're not always up to date, as well as what, the photos and everything else. We looked at the photos, and some of them, there may be a question about, is it really a single wide or is it a double wide because how a coach has been modified? But from staff's perspective, what is important is what the condition says. And the condition is, this is how you determine payment. And if there is truly a dispute, if tenants believe that the mobile home park owner is not following those conditions, then that's something that can be brought forth to the city, because it is a condition of the park closure that they follow what's set out there. So unless there's some specific factual information that you believe is incorrect, we did not see anything that we, the specifics I'm talking about is individual trailers. So if there's something other than that that you believe is incorrect and affects the, the heart of this, which is what the mobile home park owner will have to pay for relocation assistance, I don't believe that's there, that there's an inaccuracy.
Well, I am also referring, as you mentioned, the emails we received where a resident says that a different owner was actually mentioned in the impact report as being, a different person was being named the owner of the mobile home unit that, that person actually owned. And there is also, in going through the list, I saw that there was at least one name where there was no information at all, no, no, perhaps an address, but no other information at all given about the, the unit.
Again, the list was generated from public records. If there is not a public record showing who is the current owner, then it's going to be incumbent on that person living there to show that they have a valid title to that mobile home. And we don't, again, the council, if you choose to follow staff recommendations and adopt the resolution with the conditions, we don't say, mobile home X gets this amount of money. What we say is, if you are a resident owner living there, occupying there, then you're entitled to the relocation as spelled out in condition 9A. If you are a non-resident owner, then you're entitled to the relocation expenses spelled out in condition 9B. So if someone says they have it wrong on their information, then it's incumbent on that resident owner or non-resident owner to show title to the mobile home park, to the, to the owners. You know, to me, those are things that will be worked out. And the condition here does not prejudice any current owner from showing what their true status is.
Also, in going through the impact report, I was looking to see if there's any provision for, say, security deposits, or first month's rent and last month's rent, and things like that. And I did not see that itemized. Is that, what is that part of?
Again, thank you. I wanted to refer to the staff report because we did explain this in the report. On page five of this, of the council packet, at the bottom of the page, and unfortunately that said condition 10, but it's actually nine. Our ordinance, as currently stated, if you remove the in-place value, then the other item that a tenant or resident, I'm going to say mobile home resident, so we don't get confused, mobile home park resident, would be entitled to, under the ordinance, was for first month's, last month's security deposit, if I'm believing I have the right section. And that, when this was going to the first, last month's, and a security deposit for alternative rental housing, and when this went to the planning commission, the staff did a table that showed, and it is in this record that you have, that the total payment to residents would have been between $3,449 to $4,948, depending on size of the unit and size of the household. The report, and not so much even the report, the report lists money, but the fact is, that impact report, which the park owner has agreed to abide by in coming to this hearing, the options one through three, is a much greater amount of money than that. The minimum amount that someone would receive is $12,375, and the maximum amount is over $19,000. Therefore, the amount, whether you designate it as first month's, last month's, security deposit, or you call it what the park owner does, at the end of the day, the amount in that impact report and the amount that the conditions require is greater than first, last month's, and security deposit, as stated and as shown in a table that staff did to the planning commission. And that's where those numbers came from. And I, if someone else knows what table that was or the page, you can jump in, but those, as I said, it wasn't explained in page five of the staff report.
Okay, and then, thank you. Finally, the issue of the date of these documents in the impact report, many of them, many of them are more than four years old, and the issue has been raised in the past, is how up-to-date is this and how accurate can it be if information from 2005 or 2006 is presented?
In actuality, the impact report has been updated and updated per the city's staff direction. We deem the application complete, meaning we deem the impact report complete, and I believe that it's incumbent on us to rely on this impact report. There's been no evidence that these numbers are off. There is, as explained, the evidence that the staff developed as to the plant, the numbers given to the planning commission were done in July, I'm sorry, for a June 2009 hearing. So those numbers, again, range from $3,500 to not quite $5,000. The amount that's being allocated per the conditions of this, of the approval, if council approve it, is way over those amounts. So we would be hard-pressed to say that those numbers aren't valid at this point in time, based on the judge's decision and based on the reasoning in the staff report.
Do we know how many, if any, residents at Conejo Mobile Home Park received any of this $1.5 million assistance in the last year, in the last 10 years, I'm sorry?
City manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we, we can get that information. I don't think we have it at our fingertips. The information I presented was, the $1.5 million figure was for over 250 tenants throughout the nine mobile home parks, so we can get that information if need be.
If we could get that information, that'd be great, tonight. Thank you, and I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any further questions of staff? Okay, we'll, we'll go into the speakers. City clerk has advised me, we've had a, an adjustment in the number of speakers. Would you please give the, give the conditions for timing?
We now have 18 speakers, so they'll be allowed two minutes each, and the applicant appellate still has 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. I would also, I'd also like to mention to the audience here in the council chamber this evening, the, the issue before the council is difficult, complex, and has considerable emotional components attached to it. And no one addressing the city council should be influenced or intimidated by the emotions and expressions of the audience. I'm going to ask you to refrain from applause, calling, talking, respect the individual speakers as they come up, and allow them to speak without any type of, of additional influence. That will also help us get through this, get through this in a more timely manner. With that, the first speaker will be Joe Bednar, who is the applicant appellate. And Mr. Bednar, you have 15 minutes. The second speaker following Mr. Bednar will be Boyd Hill. Good evening.
Good evening, city council members and members of the community and staff. My name is Joe Bednar, reside in Agora Hills, California. I am the managing member of 1200 Newberry LLC, the owners of Old Conejo Mobile Home Park, Conejo Mobile Home Park. 1200 Newberry is ready to locate all of the affected, all of the people affected by the closure of Conejo Mobile Home Park. 1200 Newberry has assembled a team of relocation professionals with extensive experience in relocation issues. Star Management, owned by Mike Sorillo, has many years of experience in managing mobile home parks and has completed many successful park closures. 1200 Newberry is willing to accept all of the proposed conditions of approval prepared by staff, except one. We strongly agree with condition number nine of the proposed resolution. It is clear to me that the intent of state law civil code is not to reward or allow non-resident owners relocation mitigation. I would like to read a few paragraphs from a letter that was prepared, that was delivered to city council, and it's part of the supplemental package. I'd like to read a section from the state law civil code under the MLR that is pretty clear to me. If you can all follow along, it's page two of my letter, paragraph two. If you have the same letter, it should be in the supplemental package that was prepared by HKNC.
This is the HKC, HKC letter dated February 8th, 2010?
Yes, I'm on page two, paragraph two.
Thank you.
I'm going to read the MLR, the state law civil code. It starts with, under the MRL, resident is defined as a homeowner or other person who lawfully occupies a mobile home. Under that definition, a non-resident homeowner cannot be a resident because he or she does not occupy the mobile home. While the non-resident homeowner satisfies the MRL definition as a homeowner, as a person who has a tendency in the mobile home park under a rental agreement, Government Code Section 65863.7 requires that relocation costs only be paid to those who are both residents and homeowners. It seems pretty clear to me. I'd like to read the next two paragraphs, which is paragraph three and four. Staff's position is patently at odds with the city's avowed determination to protect the displaced residents of mobile home spaces. Staff's position would leave the sub-tenant resident without reasonable relocation costs and would unjustly enrich the investor owners of mobile homes who have been profiting by subleasing their mobile homes under the city's beneficial rent control ordinance. Newberry's position is correct and reasonable under state, under the law. Newberry even goes beyond what is required by the law. Newberry's closure impact report provides relocation costs to residents, sub-tenants, in a reasonable amount of $1,500, and it provides non-resident mobile homeowners an incentive to remove their coaches from the Conejo Mobile Home Park, $2,000. 1200 Newberry stands behind its closure impact report. 1200 Newberry will do everything that they can to ensure an amicable, professional, and safe park closure relocation process. We will try to make the closure of Conejo Mobile Home Park as positive and experienced as possible. I hope the city council will make the right decision. I ask city council to approve and accept my closure impact report with the proposed conditions, omitting condition number nine. I am available for questions if required, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bednar. And as both the applicant and appellate, at the conclusion of the public comments, you'll have an additional five minutes to respond.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I would again remind the speakers, when you come up, please give your name and community of residence. Our first speaker will be Boyd Hill, followed by Alma Lopez. There are seats reserved near, right directly behind the podium for people coming down, so if you come down when your name is called and get ready to get up and speak, we'd appreciate that. Thank you very much. Mr. Boyd.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gillette, members of city council and staff. We've come a long way towards understanding the meaning of the applicable law on mobile home park closure since we began this closure application process nearly three years ago. It has taken a couple of trial court decisions and a well-reasoned, comprehensive court of appeal opinion to bring us to the point where we recognize a pervasive preemptive panoply of state law governing mobile home parks from cradle to grave. Among those governing state laws is, is Government Code Section 65863.7, which the legislature and courts have recognized as part of the mobile home residency law. The mobile home residency law has been held to preempt local regulation. Staff is trying to create the perception that we have a leftover legal issue that staff's claims has not been resolved. That quote-unquote "legal issue" is whether the term resident in Government Code Section 65863.7 means non-resident. I must congratulate staff on its creative interpretation of the plain meaning and definition of resident to mean a non-resident. In all my 21 years-plus years of lawyering, I have yet to convince a court, when I am on the losing side, of the logical proposition that X equals not X. I can assure you, if I could do that, I would be the richest lawyer in history. Seriously, seriously, now, let's read what the definition of resident says. It says that a resident can be a homeowner, as the city claims, but it goes on to qualify that the homeowner must occupy the subject mobile home to qualify as a resident. That's Civil Code Section 798.11. As you are aware, the Ventura Superior Court has recently awarded costs to the park owner, which under the mobile home residency law and the private attorney general doctrine will include Newberry's attorney's fees in the sum of several thousands of dollars. Staff's incredible misreading of the law is just going to cost the city many more, more money in attorney's fees and likely also damages for additional flagrant violations of the park owner's civil rights. We urge the city council here to do the right thing and not require payment to non-resident mobile homeowners. We, in that manner, we can resolve the still pending litigation and both move on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alman Lopez, followed by Henry Dean, followed by Elise Klusman.
Good evening.
Ms. Lopez?
My name is Alma Lopez. I am a resident of Alsonox. I am here tonight to ask you to appeal the judge's decision regarding the mobile home park closures. My parents and I purchased our mobile home in the Conejo Mobile Home Park in August of 2005. We paid $50,000, which was the home's value at that time. Now with the judge's ruling, we can expect for the value of our home about $4,000. The judge's decision is not fair. I understand that because of the economy, the home is no longer worth $50,000, but it's definitely not worth $12,000. Because of the judge's decision, I estimate that we are losing about $30,000. It took my parents and I a very long time and a lot of sacrifice to save this money. It's not fair that it's all lost because of the judge's decision. We purchased our home after Bednar was the owner. If he had planned to shut down the park since back then, he should have not allowed the purchase. He should have disclosed that he was closing the park and that all of our investment would be lost. be lost. If that was the case, then, we would have passed the purchase. But because he decided to allow the purchase and collect our rent, now we're going through this hardship. Please appeal the judge's decision so that other families don't have to suffer our loss, our loss of investment, our loss of our homes, our loss of our communities, and the lost opportunities that we could have had to say no to the purchase of the home, of the mobile home. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Dane, followed by Elise Klusman, followed by Penny Mayhew.
Good evening, Council members and staff. My name is Henry Dane, and I'm speaking here in place of my son, who couldn't make it this evening. He's John Dane. He is a member of the mobile home park and lives in space number 41. And I'm going to read a letter that he composed with my wife on his feelings about the impact on him and the park. "As a proud graduate of Thousand Oaks High School and Moore Park College Special Education Program, I was able to achieve independent living after several years of part-time and seasonal jobs. I was able to do this due to getting a full-time, low-paying job at a drugstore in Newberry Park, which is nearby to the park, and I purchased an affordable unit in the Canaho Mobile Home Park within walking distance of my job. Losing this home, there is, by losing this home, there is no place in Canaho Valley that I can relocate with similar monthly cost, even a rented room. In addition, most Canaho Valley mobile home parks are for seniors, so I can't apply. If I have to move out of Thousand Oaks to some distant place, the impact report shows availability in Piru and Fillmore. I could very well lose my job, too. For over a decade, I have worked hard and received small pay raises, but now the new owners of my drugstore have reduced employee hours by 20% per week, and I cannot afford long travel costs and probably wear out my aging car. The impact report that my unit 41 is worth only $2,500, that is ridiculous. Before all this happened, I could easily have gotten $25,000 to $35,000 for the unit, and that would be a real bargain considering the cost of other units in other parks in around Thousand Oaks. Now I could easily become homeless and jobless. In addition to all of the outdated information and ridiculous suggestions for relocation far from my job in the impact report, I would like to point out that they don't even have consistent information on me in the report. In Exhibit 23, it lists me as an owner..."
Mr. Dane, you'll have to wrap up.
"...which I am of unit 41. And Exhibit 24 lists me as a renter. I have owned my mobile home park for over a decade since I moved..."
Mr. Dane, you'll have to conclude. You're way over your time.
I am, okay. Anyhow, thank you very much for listening to me. Hopefully, you can do something.
Thank you, sir. Elise Klusman, followed by Penny Mayhew, followed by Jim Strong.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Elise Klusman. I live in Vallesito, Newberry Park. I'm here on behalf of the people in Canaho Park. I have a few questions. Number one, will Mr. Bednar be forced to pay? Amy, will he have to pay under the law? And two, will there be enough? And three, where will they go? Is there any place in Thousand Oaks for them to go? Will the city have to augment any of these payments to these citizens? I guess I will go back to something I said on one of my other testimonies, which is, society is evaluated by the way it treats its elderly, its poor, and its children. And so then, my last question is, what responsibility does a city of Thousand Oaks have for these 30 families and the other people who live in this park? Thank you.
Thank you. Penny Mayhew, followed by Jim Strong, followed by Charles Oakes.
Thank you. Penny Mayhew, Canaho Mobile Home Park. At the Planning Commission meeting, Bednar said, "No one will take away anything that belongs to him." We never would, but he certainly doesn't mind taking away what belongs to us, our homes. He said, "The city is doing illegal things. The city has done nothing illegal in adopting Erickson's Law." Judge Reiser's ruling is such an injustice for everybody living in a mobile home. He made decisions about state law that goes against state law. He has taken my constitutional rights away from me in owning my personal property, my home. I must have signed somewhere when I got a mobile home to give up my civil rights and constitutional rights. I don't think that I did. Mr. Francis has advised us of our legal rights. We ask you to please appeal the courtroom's decision. You are the only one that can. I'd like to know if you have read Mr. Francis's objections to the court, because in here, there are many reasons this case should be appealed. And the judge never did really answer the reasonable cost of relocation. He said that that would need to be answered in the court, in the appellate court. And Mr. Heater said that that would be us, but we cannot do that unless this is appealed. And, um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim Strong, followed by Charles Oakes, followed by, and I believe it's Edna Parros.
Yes, I'm Jim Strong, and I live at Newberry Park at the Canaho Mobile Home Park. I've been there for 25 years, and I'm asking you to appeal the judge's decision on the reasonable location costs. And if the park does close down, there'll be a lot of us out in the streets, no place to live. And as far as the money for the grants that the city's given to mobile home parks, is that right? How much was that? In the last 10 years? Canaho Mobile Home residents didn't get a dime. They have no grant money or anything. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Charles Oakes, followed by Edna, I believe it's Parros, followed by Nancy Tamarum.
Good evening. My name is Charles Oakes. I work with a law offices at Richard Francis. Our office represents numerous residents in the Canaho Mobile Home Park. I'm here in opposition to the resolution. If the judge, if the decision of the judge is what the city attorney says it was, then I would appeal the decision, because if the decision was that the amount of reasonable relocation benefits is equal to $3,000, as the city staff says in 3,000 in their staff report, or if the judge said that the reasonable cost of relocation was what the park owner said, then I would appeal it, because that's not, for one thing, that's not what he says. In fact, I don't think the city attorney is correct. In fact, in a letter to the judge or motion to the judge, she says, "In this action for declaratory relief, the city asked only that the, whether the city's mobile home park closure ordinance could require payments of in-place value and whether it's Section 7260 could be a floor." Those were the only two things that were asked by, answered by the judge. What the reasonable cost of relocation was not asked by the judge. That's the responsibility of the city. The staff hasn't done it. The judge hasn't said what the reasonable cost of relocation is. No one has done it. It's your responsibility, and that hasn't been done. In fact, the reason for the ordinance was because the state law says that a local authority may require relocation assistance. It doesn't say, what the ordinance says is that the Thousand Oaks shall require relocation assistance, and the state law says that it can't be more than what a reasonable cost of relocation is, indicating that it could be less. What the ordinance says, if I may have more time, is what the ordinance says is that the city must determine what the reasonable cost of relocation is and make sure that the residents are paid that. There is nowhere in the staff report, anywhere, where the city has done their work. If the city, what the whole purpose of the ordinance was, is to give residents, is to allow residents to know that how much the city has determined for the cost of relocation and to make sure that the city enforces that.
You'll have to conclude, Ms. Klusman.
I will. Enforces that. If the city has now said that the, oh, one other thing.
Ms. Oakes, you'll have to conclude.
Okay, one other thing.
You're way, no, you're way over your time. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. I respectfully request that, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Just a minute, Mr. Oakes.
Yes.
If you'd come back, please.
Did you want to go, Ms. Bulletta-Painer, first?
I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Oakes.
Good evening.
First, let me just, I'm looking at the letterhead here that Mr. Francis wrote us.
Yes.
Your area of law of expertise is workers' compensation?
No, I actually, I worked with, my area of law is labor law. I was the attorney for the Olive Mobile Home Park, the relocation against the city of Oxdard, in which those residents got $70,000 for the relocation of their mobile home in similar situations.
Okay, so you have background in mobile home parks and land use?
Yes, I do have, yes.
Okay. Just give me a second, because I'm going to ask the city attorney a question, then I want to ask you a question. Ms. Albano, as I understand it, this lawsuit was brought by the city of Thousand Oaks. I'm also curious as to why Mr. Francis's firm did not participate or would be precluded from filing an appeal.
The tenants, he came in as representing part of the tenants, and they were given what we call amicus standing with the court. And quite frankly, what happened was, Mr. Francis made a motion in a different court case, which was the Newberry Park case versus the city. And in that case, the court gave him standing as an amicus. When we filed our case, the court just said, "Well, we'll grant you that standing again." And there was not, I don't even believe that a motion had been brought in that case. So as an amicus, he was not, quote, "a party to the action." I believe that if they chose to intervene, they would, or wanted to try to appeal, they would have to get permission as an intervenor in the case. And I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not totally up on that area of the law, and I don't know if this gentleman has researched whether they, how they could get standing to appeal it.
Okay. And so, my question to you, Mr. Oakes, is, what would be the legal process for you to gain access to intervene and appeal the case?
Well, one thing is that if the city doesn't comply with their own ordinance, we would have standing or the mobile home.
Okay, my question, Mr. Oakes, is to you, what would be the legal hurdles for Mr. Francis's law firm to ask and request for intervenor status and file an appeal on behalf of the residents that he represents?
Well, I think, I don't know if I can answer that or give you a legal opinion at this time about that. I believe the judge, and I wasn't involved in all the proceedings, I believe the judge made us determine that we were not a party. That's why we were, we had to do it in medias.
I understand that.
Right.
I'm going to ask you again, because you're representing Mr. Francis, who is the attorney of record for about 25, 17, 25, if I can count?
Right, but they're not parties to the, to the...
Right. My question is, what would be required, what would be the legal process for Mr. Francis, who is the attorney of record, who does represent a majority of residents in the park, who represented the residents at the mediation? What would be the legal process for him to gain intervenor status to represent the owner, the residents, and to file an appeal?
I'm not sure we can, because, or for instance, people, because we were not parties to it...
Not to interrupt, Mr. Oakes, you say you're not sure you can. What would prevent you from doing that?
But would or wouldn't?
Yeah. What would prevent you from doing that? And let me just follow up. Has Mr. Francis written to court or filed any of the legal briefings that would be required to gain access to file an appeal? Has any of that been done?
It's my belief that we won't, we wouldn't have standing to file an appeal at this time.
And why would that be?
Because we weren't parties to the lawsuit. It's just like someone in another, this affects people who, in other mobile homes in Thousand Oaks, the way that, what the judge determined in this ordinance.
Right.
So until they know that they're affected, or how they're affected, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have standing to file suit or an appeal. And so, if you proceed with this, then, and then my clients are affected and know that they're affected, that they're being asked to move, then we may be able to file a different lawsuit that would, that go and look at that, the judge's opinion or your actions in this. But I'm not, I don't believe that we have standing to file an appeal on this, because we're not affected.
Ms. Albano, would you concur with that, that Mr. Francis, if they were given, I believe you said, the amicus, okay, as, and that's kind of an adjoining part of the lawsuit, is that not correct? Because I know the city has done that a number of times with the League of Cities, where we adjoin in a lawsuit with the league. While the league's filing the lawsuit, we're adjoining in a lawsuit. I'm asking the city attorney. Thanks.
When you're given amicus status, it's really called friends of the court. So you're just giving the court legal, your opinion, just as a friend, not as a party. So as an amicus, they would not have standing to file the appeal. What I think there is a very different question is whether there's any legal process at this stage in the litigation to move, to be deemed an intervenor as a party so that they could file the appeal. And that's what I was saying. I don't, I don't pretend to have an answer to that at all.
And I guess, because, Mr. Oakes, my question to you is, is that, is Mr. Francis planning on filing the necessary paperwork to even see if there is an opportunity for an appeal?
I would answer your question, no, but he is looking at the options to defend the rights of the coach owners in, so depending on the actions of cities and so forth, he will look at the options and alternatives on how to, to ensure that they are adequately compensated under the state and the ordinance.
Right, because I, for one, I would welcome Mr. Francis filing an appeal if he believes that they're standing, and we have a letter here that outlines a number of legal points that, from Mr. Francis's perspective, are grounds for appeal. I guess my question, the other question would be, the city attorney has advised us that because of the delay that would be involved in appeal if the city were to move forward, that's why she strongly advised us not to do that, and the damage that would be incurred, a private law firm, would those damages then also be applied as well, if you're to file an appeal and lose?
If we, well, the law firm wouldn't be responsible. It would be, if the court places cost and, cost and attorney's fees, it would be on the name plane, as I believe, but so the law firm wouldn't be responsible for it.
So it'd be on the people that you represent?
Yes.
Okay. And it's not just the legal fees. I think the city attorney is opine to the council that it's the quote-unquote "taking" of property, where we get into the, maybe millions of dollars in terms of taking of property value. That's, I think, the issue that the councils, at least for me, that's the issue that we need to reconcile, but that would not be, that wouldn't apply to...
No.
Okay.
Right, no, because they aren't acting as a city body. They can only act on, they only have standing as to the harm that, and the harm that they incur from the actions of the city or, and so forth.
Okay, so again, just in closing, for the record, is Mr. Francis planning on filing any legal paperwork to look at whatever he can do in light of an appeal on behalf of the residents that he represents?
In my conversations with Mr. Francis, we don't believe that we have standing to appeal. We do believe that if the city does proceed, that they may be violating their own ordinance, and by doing that, our clients would be harmed. And if so, the clients would be harmed, because the city isn't, the city is required to make sure, required to do certain things. They're required to find out what the reasonable cost of relocation is, which no one has done, and they're required to make sure that the park owner pays that. And the... And, and the, uh, and even in your, in the ordinance, contrary to what the staff report says, the staff report says the minimum, excuse me, the minimum is just, uh, payment of the lump sum equal to first last month's rent. That's just number four. Number three, which is still in the ordinance, says payment of lump sum equal to the cost of moving displaced mobile home park residents to alternate, alternative housing. So what is that cost? What is the cost of moving someone from, and how much would it cost you? How much are you going to write the check to move from Conejo to somewhere in, in, um, in, in another park in Thousand Oaks or so forth? That's the cost of relocation.
Right.
And that's what they need to be compensated for, and that's a reasonable cost. It, it, the judge did not look at what, he did not define what a reasonable cost of relocation is. That's your job, and that's what they're, they're asking for.
Right, I understand that. Believe me, I'm well aware of the complexity of this, Mr. Oaks.
Exactly. But if they don't get that, then they have a right to say, no. The state requires it, and your ordinance requires it, and I'm not getting it. And that's what your responsibility is as government officials, to, as the, uh, city manager says, to, to be out front, to be progressive, to be, um, on, on the rights of mobile home, you know?
Okay, I appreciate it.
This is one judge.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
It's our right to appeal things. Judges aren't always right.
We understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Mrs. Belaupinia.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Oaks? Oh, okay. Mr. Oaks, no, it wasn't for you. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it. Mrs. Belaupinia, a question of the city attorney?
Yes, it was actually just piggybacking on what was discussed. Uh, it, it was clear tonight that the residents of Conejo Mobile Home were not part of the lawsuit, uh, at all, because the lawsuit was filed by the city, and it was an issue between the park owner and the city. And my question is, now, it appears they have really no standing to appeal, they may be looking into it. Do we know why the residents were not part of the initial lawsuit, why they were not invited?
I'm sorry, um, the city filed a declaratory relief action against the park owners. That's who the dispute is with over what is the meaning of the ordinance vis-à-vis state law. The, um, tenants and their attorney, well, their attorney was notified, we filed this lawsuit. That was up to him to seek standing in that lawsuit. My understanding of how the procedural process sort of worked is the court basically said, without even a motion, that, well, you're, as I granted you amicus standing in that suit, meaning the suit between Newberry and the city, the Conejo Mobile Home Park owners, twelve hundred Newberry, what they filed against us, I'll grant you the same here, but there was never a motion. I can't tell you, or opine, or even speculate why Mr. Francis did or did not do certain things in the lawsuit between the city and Newberry Park. All I can tell you is, at the end of the day, he, um, participated in the suit, so it's not true that he wasn't there, they participated as amicus. Now, whether he had the right to do something more, or to appeal that part of the judge's decision, or anything else, I really am not in a position to opine about, because, um, really, my job at that point was to make sure that the, what we did is appropriate, and that he's there to represent the interest of the tenants and to figure out the best way to do it. So procedurally, he had the opportunity to file a motion, as he did in the other case. I can't speak to why or why not he didn't do that. Procedurally, whether you can appeal a court's denial of only allowing you to be on amicus, that's up to him to decide, possibly now that there's a final judgment, I don't know if that's an appealable order. There's a lot of legal issues that only the tenant's attorney can answer, and I can't truly speculate to
Okay.
what their reasons or strategy was.
Now, in terms of hypothetically speaking, if there were to be an appeal, how would that, what impact would that have on whatever happens tonight, uh, with, with the decision tonight? Would everything still go, go forward according to staff recommendation? Would the impact closure report be delayed, or, or how, what impact would an appeal have?
Well, currently, there is no appeal. So we're suggesting that the goes forward. So let's hypothetically say that the council determines to, um, approve staff's recommendation tonight, and to move forward, um, with the impact report and approve it. The tenants have a minimum of six months of their notice. The, in, there's like sixty days to file an appeal. So say, within that intervening time, the tenants figure out a way to appeal it and file an appeal. Our, I'm, this is all hypothetical, so don't anyone, so we would move ahead, they could then move, if you had standing to appeal, then you have standing to ask a court to delay the decision here and to stop it from proceeding. And if the court felt there was a reason to, they could. If not, everything would move. If a decision came down before everything happened, then arguably, it could all be undone. But if it didn't, that's, you know, I hate to say this, it is an issue of law that was brought, not an issue per se of this mobile home park. I mean, the court was ruling on what the ordinance, in a limited set of circumstances and the questions that we asked, what it meant and what it really turned on.
Thank you.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes, Mr. Fox.
You know, I think, uh, and I, I do want to hear from the rest of the speakers, that there has been a number of, well, years, actually, that have transpired, uh, on this issue. And I, I want to go back, and I just want to ask the city attorney a couple of questions here, because I think Ms. Albano has been placed in a position where she is defending an ordinance that she did not write. Uh, and I just want to go back and briefly revisit, uh, Ms. Albano, just a couple of quick questions.
Mr. Fox, given the significance and the importance of this issue, take as much flexibility as you need, that's what we're here for.
All right. Uh, we're talking about a city ordinance, and I know you covered it in your, in your, uh, very brief to the council, but I want to go back, and I want to revisit exactly how we got to where we got. Uh, and so let me just ask you a few questions, Ms. Albano. First, did the city attorney's office draft and write the ordinance that was adopted by council?
The July two thousand eight, no.
Okay. Did your office have a chance to review the ordinance as it was submitted through initiative by a number of signatures, the required number of signatures of registered voters in Thousand Oaks? Did your office have an opportunity to review the initiated, uh, language as it was presented to the council?
We didn't have the opportunity to, um, make any substantive changes
That wasn't my question.
I'm sorry.
Not to interrupt. Did your office have an opportunity to review the language that was submitted to the council for adoption?
No.
Okay. So you didn't read it at all? We just voted on it here at the city council?
We read it, I'm sorry. And that's why I wasn't sure of your question. I, we weren't allowed, it's submitted to us as written.
I understand that.
We then did, and if I'm going off, stop me, we, uh, the, the city staff did an analysis of the initiative.
Yes. And what did you advise the council?
We advised the council that there was an open question in a public setting, in a public memo, that there was an open question as to legality of some of the provisions of the initiative.
And specifically, what were some of those issues that you raised?
The specific one to tonight was the payment of, of relocation expenses being in-place value, and that overall, no matter what the laundry list of what had to be paid, it was all limited by state law, which says the reasonable cost of relocation, and that there was an open question as to what that meant, and in particular, whether in-place value would have to be paid.
And so, not in legal terms, but did you in fact advise the council, Ms. Albano, that this ordinance, that the council was contemplating, adopting, may be rendered illegal by the court?
Yes.
Okay. And is that in fact what happened in part? Did Judge Reiser in fact throw out provisions of this ordinance?
In a sense, yes, by his decision.
Yes. And were those issues that he identified, were those the exact, in part, identical issues that you raised in your advice to the city council?
Yes.
Okay. And I wanted to go through that, because I don't want folks to get the idea that the city authored this ordinance. In fact, we're going to have some speakers here later tonight that I think did have a hand in authoring that, that initiative, which was adopted by the council, uh, and we'll get to that in, in a moment. But I think that clarification needs to be made, that at the outset, the city attorney advised the council that this ordinance was very problematic, very problematic. And here we are now, uh, a court has ruled, and they ruled identically to how the city attorney advised the city council. So I, I just need, we all need to kind of look at that as how we got to where we got today. Thanks, Ms. Mayor.
Okay. Additional, any additional comment on that? We ready to begin or resume? Okay. The next speaker, our next speaker, uh, I believe it's Eleanor or Edman Parros, followed by Nancy Tamarin, followed by Deborah Fisher. Good evening.
Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council member.
Please, please get as close as you can, that's it, to the microphone, so we can all hear you. Thank you.
My name is Edna Paras, a mother of six boys, a resident of Conejo Mobile Home Park. The impact report of Mr. Bednar dated on May first, two thousand nine, must require, contain information nearly five years old. The city must require him to give current information to housing options that are affordable and available to Conejo Mobile Home Park residents. The offer of Mr. Bednar to us will last only two to three months in the apartment rent after we will be homeless. The sheer decision on the closure of Conejo Mobile Home Park represent justice for mobile home residents in Thousand Oaks. Recently, Mr. Bednar came here recently as a cruel investor with no regards to the damage, damages to the lives of our residents who live here for years and have chosen this area because it is safe for their children and for my children too. The city council must appeal the judge Reiser's decision of what constitute reasonable relocation cost with no regards to the voice of Conejo Valley resident through a resolution which you adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy, Nancy Tamarin, followed by Deborah Fisher, followed by Rodney Buehl. Nancy Tamarin. Okay. Deborah Fisher, followed by Rodney Buehl, followed by Dan Douglas. Good evening.
Good evening, city council. My name is Deborah Fisher, and I have lived in the Conejo Mobile Home Park for thirty-one years. And I want to thank you for all your efforts so far, but we still, you know, need your help. Speaking for myself, I'm fifty-five years old, I have ten years left on my mortgage, my thirty-year mortgage. If I'm forced out of my home, I'm forced into bankruptcy, where will I be able to live? I have no friends or relatives to help me move, and where could I possibly, you know, afford to live? I'm too old to start my life all over again. I only hope that I'm able to work until I die, because there's no other choice. Please help bring some justice to this horrible situation and appeal this bad decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Rodney Buehl, followed by Dan Douglas, followed by Janet Wall.
My name is Rodney Buehl. I live in unit number forty-five, and all on the impact report, it's, everything, there's no information on anything. Um, I bought it in two thousand four for sixty-one thousand. I still got thirty-six thousand left on it. And obviously, as the attorney said, that I have no recourse for the, uh, issue of taking of property. And, you know, I guess, as, you know, I listen to lawyers, and, you know, they're fine-tuning everything. My contract that I signed with the original guys has a line through the, my space rent. So does that mean that I can get a refund on my space rent if it's got a line through it? It's not even written in there, you know, as numbers, and, you know? These are kind of things, you know, and I just, I, I see the families, and I see the children, and it's just sad that a company would come in and, and have no regards for human life. And that's, that's a sad fact. You know, he's worried about his profits, and the rest of the people are worried about eating and paying their bills. And, you know, there's, there's got to be something that, you know, can be done, you know? I don't know, but, you know, I guess I'm going to have to get my, I know for me, I'll get my contract out and see if I can get a lawyer to get my money back, I guess, because mine says zip on it. As for my monthly payment, I've just been depositing in his bank account, I guess, so. Thank you very much, and, uh, I am a resident there, in spite of what is on all the paperwork.
Thank you. Dan Douglas, followed by Janet Wall, followed by Roger Swanson.
Uh, yeah, my name's Dan Douglas, uh, I live up there, twelve hundred Newberry Road. I bought in two thousand five, um, you know, and I have a mortgage that I have to deal with. I see Joe Bednar, his lawyer, and his bodyguard up there laughing. Well, to them, I say, Lord, forgive these men of greed. They have not been touched by thy hand. And I just wonder what, what went wrong, uh, in court. Um, Amy said from that chair, it was defendable in court. Now, tonight, she acts like she didn't have anything to do, she didn't want to do it. And every one of you, except for maybe, maybe this one here, have told me half-truths, and you never wanted to win this lawsuit. I accuse you of losing it on purpose, so you can put out an open invitation for developers to, you know, that are too big to fail, I guess. It's, it's just not right, and, you know, I know that doesn't matter to any of you people. And, you know, I, I've changed my speech so many times, listening to things said, that I, you know, I, I don't know what else to say about it that hasn't been said. But, uh, it should be appealed, it could, can be appealed, and, uh, you know, Amy's back there coaching somebody else on how to, uh, twist it around right now to make us look like we're in the wrong. You know, you talk about an unfair taking of property, what is this? This is the most unfair, unjust thing I've ever heard in my life. It just, it goes without reason that somebody could give seventy-five thousand dollars for a mobile home, and then some man walk in and say, it's only worth twelve thousand. It's fair, it's just. And then, you know, people just say like, well, you know, that's America, that's what you get for, you know, trying to play ball in this fixed game that, you know, the middle class can't win. You know, it's all about the rich, two percent owning ninety percent of the wealth in America. You know, I mean, you know, charity starts at home, what, you know, we're looking for you people for help, you know? What are we supposed to do for ourselves with this? How can we do anything against a multimillion-dollar, you know, corporation with assets unlimited? And, you know, yet he's up there, Mr. Bednar, worried about every penny that he can get.
Mr. Douglas, you'll have, you'll have to wrap up, you're way over on your time.
Yes, sir, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Wall, followed by Roger Swanson, followed by Sean Torres.
Good evening, my name's Janet Wall. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'd like to check with you first, do you have the letter I submitted from Gordon Manley? Anybody? Yes. Okay, thank you. Do you have the other packet that I gave you that has my name on it as well as Brenda Feldman? Thank you. I'm here to read a letter from Gordon Manley. As you may remember, he is an eighty-five-year-old World War II vet who Thank you. I'm here to read a letter from Gordon Manley. As you may remember, he is an 85-year-old WWII vet who lives at Conejo and is about to lose his home. Dear city council members, Thousand Oaks City staff report states that the closure impact report offers me three options when Conejo Mobile Home Park closes. Option 10.1 is to relocate my coach to another mobile home park. That is not an option. Option 10.2 requires homeowners choosing this option will be those who have elected not to move their mobile homes. They will choose to move to alternative type of housing. Clearly, this is also not a choice for me because I do not elect to abandon the home I have owned for 31 years, the only property I own. Furthermore, I cannot choose this option because $14,000 or $15,000 will not allow me to quote "find adequate housing in a mobile home park." That is Title VII California Government Code, Section 65863.7E, copy attached. I choose to move to another mobile home park as the law provides when my park closes. Option 10.3 offers even less money. Please do not approve this closure tonight. Your findings falsely state, despite Judge Riser's limitations, that the closure impact report quote "contains reasonable measures for mitigating the impact of losing my home." The options above do not mitigate for my loss of home and property. The options above do not allow me to find adequate housing in a mobile home park or anywhere else for more than a few months. As the lead legislative body, I implore you to protect my constitutional property rights as well as the property rights of every mobile homeowner in Thousand Oaks. Thank you for your consideration.
Roger Swanson, followed by Sean Torres, followed by Brenda Feldman.
Well, good evening. I'm Roger Swanson. I live in Conejo Mobile Home Park. And what I'd like to say is, probably, there's more I'd like to say. It's at two minutes anyway. With the economy the way it is and me losing my job last year, I'm now self-employed and daily looking for work. In 1991, I came to Thousand Oaks. In 2001, I bought my own home at Conejo Mobile Home Park, which I found housing wonderful, caring people. The reason I bought my home was because I believed that I could afford the cost, as at that time I had a job. I know the city of this area has a fondness for and strict rules regarding its oak trees, not allowing them to be destroyed. The park owner said he saw our park as a place that was coming to its end of usefulness. When he bought it, his intention was not to maintain it so he could uproot its residents, forcing them out. Are we not more important to the city than its oak trees? Mr. Bednar wants to go strictly by the law, while God's 10th commandment says, "Thou shall not covet thy neighbor's house." To me, it seems that Mr. Bednar wants our homes to destroy them so they can't, since they can't be moved. How much of a life does any one of us have in years? Just so much? We live both the supplier and buyer to maintain a comfortable livelihood. Why can't it continue? I feel that our plight at Conejo Mobile Home Park is not so much different than the, was for the North American Indians who lived on the land and were shoved out by the white man and eventually put on reservations. Oh, that we had a reservation that we could run to.
Thank you. Sean Torres, followed by Brenda Feldman, followed by Mike Cerrio.
Good evening, city council, mayor. Last night, I was looking in the dictionary. I looked under integrity. Integrity means firm adherence to a code of moral or artistic values, incorruptibility. Two, an unimpaired condition, soundness. Three, the quality or state of being complete or undivided, completeness. I then looked up the Constitution. The basic principles and laws of a nation, state, or social group that determine the powers and duties of the government and guarantee certain rights to the people in it. I get, I say, "certain rights to the people in it." Private property is essential to personal freedom and liberty because it enables an individual to gain independence from the state by accumulating land, money, and wealth. In the Declaration of Independence, the founding fathers wanted to assert that Americans were protected in life, liberty, and property. John Adams stated, "The moment the idea is admitted into society that property is not sacred as the laws of God, and that there is not a force of law and public justice to protect it, anarchy and tyranny commence." We are seeing this everywhere in our country, taking of property. Yeah, Joe Bednar does have rights. He does own property, but we also own property too, our mobile homes. Again, integrity, firm adherence to a code of moral and artistic values, incorruptibility. I ask that we appeal this decision. I ask that you guys have the integrity to do this for us, the residents of the mobile home park, of Conejo Mobile Home Park. Something that Mr. Bednar has none of. He has no integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Feldman, followed by Mike Cerrio, followed by Alfredo Sandoval.
Good evening. I am Brenda Feldman. Who would have thought we would make the full circle to come right back from where we started three years ago? I do recall, you councilmen, Fox, offering to mitigate a compromise between Mr. Bednar and the Conejo Mobile homeowners. You offered to come to an equitable price to, in effect, evict the homeowners. As that did not happen, we instead have had a long journey together. We've learned a lot along the way. We have learned that the will of the people can be defeated by one judge's decision, or rather, by the interpretation of that decision. In your package from Janet Wall and me, there is a letter from Will Constantine saying that the communities of Santa Cruz and Carson found in favor of using the survey. It's up in appeals court in March. Relating to tonight's decision, even if you decide to go with the impact report to protect the city from claims of taking the property of the developer, you open the city to the equally untenable position of taking the property of the homeowners. There are communities that interpret decisions in favor of property owners and others who use humane decisions. In your package, the city of Los Angeles has a rent stabilization relocation assistance program that gives a renter of an apartment $15,000, one renter, gives, these are folks of moderate income, $18,000 to others. So you're offering much less to a mobile homeowner than a renter in the city of Los Angeles. I think you could, if you decide to take the relocation report, have the city relocate the people in Thousand Oaks to other mobile home parks. You can do that. Please make that your legacy. Thank you.
Mike Cerrio, followed by Alfredo Sandoval.
My name is Mike Cerillo. I reside in Oxnard, California. I am with Star Management, the firm that prepared the impact report and has managed the community for, since Mr. Bednar and Newberry's purchase. A couple of quick comments relating to the impact report. When we were preparing the impact report and looking at the 20-mile radius, it became obvious very quickly, based on the market information that we had. We operate approximately 14 mobile home parks in Ventura County, so we have a pretty good idea of what the lay of the land is. There, there are no vacant spaces, no suitable sites to relocate the homes from Conejo, save maybe two or three of the later model homes. So that is really not an option. So we expanded the radius to areas that there were relocation spaces available, and so within that 150-mile radius, there, there are suitable relocation sites. With regard to the difference between a single and a double wide, it's very simple. How many serial numbers does a unit have? If it has one, it's a single wide. If it has two, it's a double wide. If it has three, it's a triple wide. Very simple, straightforward. So that should not be an issue. With regard to the information that we derived on the reports, city attorney hit it right on the head. It's a matter of public record. The residents, in many instances, did not have the decals or insignia numbers available on their homes. In spite of requests, we were unable to gain their cooperation to provide us with that information, and we were at an impasse. We have no ability to compel them to do it. And probably to the most important issue, Mr. Bednar is committed to helping however he can to make the relocation of these residents happen. The park is going to close. There's no doubt about that. And Mr. Bednar is committed to provide assistance, provide expertise, provide consultants to allow these folks to move on to the next chapter in their life. And unfortunately, for most of them, it's probably not going to be another mobile home. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. I'm sorry, just, I'm sorry, did you have a question of the speaker? Mrs. Phil Delapena has a, has a question, Mr. Cerrio.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Cerrio. Mr. Bednar mentioned earlier this evening, and you repeated it tonight, that Mr. Bednar is willing to assist in some fashion. And is there a reason why that portion of relocation is not part of the closure report?
I think the relocation report does speak to the availability of a relocation consultant, and that there would be individual counseling sessions with the people who are being displaced to provide whatever assistance within reason to facilitate them finding a new place to live.
Does that additional assistance entail any monies, or simply services such as counseling?
It's, it does not entail any additional funds being paid to the residents being relocated. It contemplates services to be provided to those residents which are at the expense of Mr. Bednar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our final speaker, Alfredo Sandoval. Mr. Sandoval.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Alfredo Sandoval. I live in Conejo Mobile Home Park. I'm a father of three girls. I have my wife with me, and she's back there. I'm the only one that works. I'm here to ask you to appeal this, the judge's decision of what constitutes reasonable relocation cost. If Bednar forces us to move, who will find us another place to live for normal lives? That's a question here for you, for you, the city council members. How can you approve an impact report dated May 1, 2009, when it contains information that is nearly five years old? The impact report is now outdated. That is so much useless to everyone. How about if you require Mr. Bednar to give current information of housing options that are affordable and available to Conejo Mobile Home Park owners and residents?
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. That concludes the requested speaker cards. The applicant appellate, Mr. Bednar, Mr. Bednar, you have appeal or response. You have five minutes, sir, should you choose?
Good evening again, mayor and city council members. In response, I can respond to the information provided in the impact report that it was done a few years back, although, under current conditions, the, all the numbers and prices and rent numbers used are approximately 30% higher than current market at this point. So the revised report may lower the impact result numbers by at least 30%. That report was done in a much better market. You're right, the market has gone down. So I can answer that question. And another question is...
Mr. Bednar, I apologize. I, I should have allowed the staff to comment on the speakers. If you wouldn't mind, sir, if you'll hold up for just a couple of minutes, I want to make sure that all of the public testimony, including the response from staff, is in before we put you in a position of responding. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, please. Staff response to the comments and questions. Also, at this time, I would announce, and I'm circulating them now for the council, that we have 18 speaker, 18 comment cards. Five are pro-appeal. One is con, or, I'm sorry, 12 are con-closure. Five are pro-appeal, and one is a question card. Staff.
The only comment I'd like to make is with respect to the offer in the impact report that was just discussed to assist residents in finding alternative housing. That's on page 24 of the impact report. I don't know if, if Amy or the city attorney or anyone else has any comments.
I'll ask Mrs. Albano.
Thank you, Mr. Member, members of the council, members of the public and staff. We were asked the question whether Mr., the closure of the park, that the park owner would be required to pay what's set out in the conditions, and the answer is yes, that they do have to pay that. I do want to speak to this whole issue of the judge's decision, what our ordinance requires, and what we've done here tonight. And so I ask that everyone bear with me for a few moments while I work through that. We had Mr. Oaks making many statements about the judge's decision and how it's impacting us, and I believe he basically didn't say they would sue us, but was threatening that the tenants very well may sue us on how the council applies this ordinance tonight. So once again, the council finds itself in the dilemma of being in a lawsuit, having brought its own suit, trying to follow not just what the judge said, but what state law requires us to do, and being threatened with another lawsuit depending on its decision. And so I'm going to hopefully help us, we make our way through all of that. Mr. Oaks was correct that the council, the city filed an action based on council direction to ask the court whether in-place value of the mobile homes was a violation of state law, and also whether the floor of having to pay relocation assistance under state law as if it was a city taking the action was appropriate. Because we felt those were two real sticking points in the ordinance. What the judge did is he said the in-place market value, we couldn't require that. And I have heard very clearly and understand the, and would feel the same way many people spoke tonight about that they owe money on their homes, or they believe there was equity in their homes, and that they're not being compensated for that. And unfortunately, the court did say, you know, that the constitutional property rights of the mobile homeowners is adversely implicated by the legislation, but that the state legislature is the one that placed the burden on, on the owners of the coaches and not on that park owner. And that is what, that's, I'm reading from his opinion, that that's what he says. And it's not the function of the judicial system to question the wisdom of the legislature. And that's been part of the problem all along, from way back, even before the July 2008 initiative was brought forward, is what was meant by that limitation in state law that says the park owner has to, that the steps required to be taken to mitigate, and the mitigation is to, we can condition a closure on the ability of displaced mobile home park residents to find adequate housing in a mobile home park. And the steps required to be taken to mitigate that adverse action shall not exceed the reasonable cost of relocation. We have gone round and round in this change. We have gone round and round in this chamber, in other public settings, about what that means. And one thing we now know is that paying in-place market value doesn't mean, doesn't fall within this. We had testimony tonight from people that reside there as residents, as well as from their attorneys, saying, "Well, you know, the cost of moving to an apartment, or the cost of moving here, or the value of moving to a separate, a new rental." But the statute talks in terms of mitigating displaced home park, mobile home park residents to find adequate housing in a mobile home park. That's the dilemma. And then that is being modified then by the language of, "The steps required to be taken shall not exceed the reasonable cost of relocation." So what, as I read the judge's decision, and I read the ordinance, and I read state law, even though there are a laundry list in the ordinance such as last month's rent, first month's rent, difference in rental prices to move into an apartment, the cost of moving to an apartment, at the end of the day, the park owner is not supposed to pay more than that reasonable cost of relocation. And so when staff's making its recommendation, and so if we were not really clear, I'm trying to be very clear now, that we're recommending to council is that those amounts that we put in condition nine is the ceiling of what would have to be paid. So whether you delineate it, as was delineated in the impact report, as reasonable cost of relocation, or whether you call it something else, such as first month's rent, last month's rent, security deposit, and moving expenses, we're saying that is, in essence, the ceiling. And so your, Mr. Oaks is correct, that the judge did not actually define that. We are taking what the judge said in that decision, and we're taking what the reasonable reading of the law, and we're taking what's actually written into the ordinance, and we're making the recommendation to this body tonight, and it is the council's decision, ultimately. But we feel that that laundry list that's left in the ordinance is somewhat, it is capped by the reasonable cost of relocation. I did want to, I can't speak to the, what happened in Oxnard. I thought we had reported that to the council before. I know at one point I was told a number much lower than $70,000. One of the cases in Oxnard, the city was the actor, the city was the one that was closing the park, it was part of a combination to do the interchange at price. And even in that one, I know that the relocation expenses, I believe, were in the 20 to 25 to 30. He's shaking his head, so I may be wrong, but it was clearly based on a different law than what's being faced here. And if there are other findings where an owner agreed to pay more, that very well may be. And even in our ordinance allows alternative amounts to be paid. And whether there was any discussions or anything else about that happening, what I'm saying is, I can't really comment on what happened elsewhere, but I can comment on what our ordinance requires and what state law does. But there's a very different situation if the city itself was taking action. We're applying our ordinance. Although I hear what the residents have said, in terms of the city's risk, we are not, if the city takes the action tonight recommended by staff, the city is not taking property. The city is moving ahead, and I do want to make this clear. When we make land use decisions, whether it's this application or any other application in the city where it is a written decision, the applicant is responsible for defending that action of the council. And that would be the same in this case. So if, at the end of this, if the council, if a writ action is brought to say that the council's action isn't supported, or we didn't follow the ordinance correctly, there is a condition that we put in all our land use cases, that say the applicant, in this case slash appellant, is on the hook to indemnify and defend the city. And the reason we do that is they're the real party in interest. They're the one that truly has the quote-unquote "dog" in this fight. So that is, I know there has been discussion with the applicant at one point about that condition, that is a condition we put in all of ours. We believe it's totally legal, and it is one of the conditions in tonight's. That's my wrap-up. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Mrs. Albano. Questions of staff? Mr. Fox?
Again, a question for Mrs. Albano. Mrs. Albano, in memory serves me correct, at the outset of, of this issue, the council began this discussion with Mr. Bednar, acting on behalf, so to speak, of the Conejo Park residents. Is that correct? Is that your recollection as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I can remember a number of meetings where we were strategizing in how we may approach Mr. Bednar. My question for you tonight is, in our council discussion, am I open to discussing those discussions when we were acting on behalf of the Conejo Park residents, in terms of our strategy and how we were going to approach this complex issue? Without disclosing any of the issues that occurred in the mediation?
What I believe we can discuss is, and I alluded to it, there was a meeting that was held at a location very close to the park, early on, I believed it was December of 2007, where we were discussing with the tenants and residents of the park about what the choices were that could be made. We were trying to explain the whole issue of the general plan amendments, because that was pending in front of the council, as well as the relocation, what state law allowed, what we believed it didn't allow. There was a lot of discussions about strategies in terms of making a court, making a decision versus someone else making a decision.
Right.
And there was a newspaper reporter at that meeting, it was open to the public, we were not controlling that you could or couldn't come in, and that it was actually reported in the newspaper. So I do not believe that anything we said at that meeting was in any way done in a confidential setting. It was a public meeting, an informational meeting for people.
Okay. Very good. Thanks.
Okay, I, also, I, going back at the very beginning of this, when it started, there was discussion, when Mr. Bednar's project was a commercial facility, medical office, and discussion at that time about changing that project to include a residential project, which would include, and were you going to address that, an affordable housing project?
That's actually in the, in the staff report.
Okay, but I think, I think it's germane to make sure that it's part, do you want to take that up?
We can certainly do that in our council discussion, sure.
All right, all right, we'll leave it there. Mrs. Phil Delapena?
Thank you. Yeah, regarding the affordable housing, I see that the representative from Many Mansions is here tonight, and I think it was stated in a past public hearing that at least one member, perhaps more, Conejo Valley Mobile Home Park, Conejo Mobile Home Park have been on the list for, to be, to find Section 8 housing for several years now, while this entire process was taking place, and apparently it may still be waiting, I'm not sure. So this, anyhow, I just, I just wanted to mention that, because we had discussed in the past to put residents on the priority list, the residents of Conejo Mobile Home, and I don't know whether that has actually happened. Thank you.
Okay, and, and that can, as Mr. Fox mentioned, it can be brought back under, under council discussion, but we did, the city did go out and engage discussion with Many Mansions, the Area Housing Authority, and Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, and brought all of them in with the idea that perhaps we could, with the change in project scope, or change in project, we could move income-eligible residents of Conejo Mobile Home Park into a condominium facility at that location, and establish an equity position for them where they would have, they would have replacement housing. But that concept, I remember, was rejected at some point in this discussion. Okay, further questions of staff? Mrs. Albano?
Thank you, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't, I have one other thing I wanted to state. The city did retain outside counsel, Mr. Henry Heater of a very well-known law firm who did act as city counsel, as our attorneys, I don't, too many councils were being used, that are outside attorneys. Mr. Heater carried this litigation in defending us in the current lawsuit, as well as bringing the lawsuit against 1200 Newberry. I was not the attorney, I was at the hearings, but Mr. Heater is the one that wrote our legal papers, that made the arguments to the court. He is renowned statewide, so I don't want anyone to think that we went to court trying to lose this. We went to court trying to win it. And we had friends of the court, by the tenants being represented, both sides were fully prepared, we wrote briefs, we made arguments to the court. So the, I just wanted it clear that I was not the one that was the lead on the litigation, but the council did invest the money to hire an outside law firm to represent the city and the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Albano, and, as Ms. Phil Delapena?
I have a question for Mrs. Albano. Do you know whether Henry Heater was familiar with the Oxnard case, or the San Jose case, where residents were able to receive approximately, I believe, $45,000 for their coaches in a case up in San Jose?
I can't say specifically whether he knows that. Mr. Heater has been involved with this litigation up and down the state, and has, I can say, made a gallant effort in front of the court to reach a decision. Whether, Mr. Heater, I can't tell you whether he knew that all, I can tell you is that he has been up against the Hart King Cauldron firm up and down the state, they're very familiar with each other, he's an expert in this area, and he did his best to represent the city on that lawsuit.
Thank you, Ms. Phil Delapena. City attorney, or, I'm sorry, city manager, comment on the affordable housing component?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you've touched on a question about, well, what can or what should the city do to help the families that are impacted? And you, I want to remind you, and it's covered in the report here, several years ago, when the, Mr. Bednar and his team, the new owners came in with their request to close the park, and to do an assisted medical, or assisted living medical project. In response to the requests from the tenants in the mobile home park to stay on the property, we did work with Mr. Bednar and his team, and they were willing to change their project from an assisted living to a multifamily housing project. And in response to that, the council did change the zoning from commercial to high-density housing. And that would have allowed for a multifamily housing project that could accommodate all sorts of varieties of market rate, and affordable units with covenants and restrictions to ensure long-term affordability for those that are income-eligible, which possibly would include many of the tenants in this park, we don't know that for sure, but those who are income-eligible would have, as the mayor indicated, likely been guaranteed the opportunity to stay on the property. Now, whether those would have been rental units, or owner-occupied units, that would have had to be determined based on what the property owner was willing to do. And the redevelopment agency was willing, if the project had gone forward, to possibly be a participant financially in the project to keep rents and/or purchase prices low and affordable. And the city staff did indeed work with Many Mansions and the Area Housing Authority staff to explore all sorts of possibilities, and the Cabrillo Group to Economic Development Corporation expressed an interest. But when the zoning was then changed because of the initiative, and that opportunity was stripped away from the tenants and the community, and keeping the tenants on the site was, was removed. In the packet tonight, I did remind the council that when Mayor Gillette became mayor this term, he did state in his incoming speech his interest in having the city slash redevelopment agency explore ways to assist with relocation costs. We don't know what we can do legally, but staff has been studying that, it'll take us a little while to understand what our options are, but that, that is a possibility, we can't make any commitments tonight, but we certainly can take a look at that, where permissible, where income eligibility is there, and where redevelopment money can be used.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Further questions of staff? There being none. Mr. Bednar? I know that's a long wait, but I appreciate that. As the applicant appellate, you now have up to five minutes to sum up and respond, and I appreciate your tolerance. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, and good evening again, everybody. You know, I just would like to say that, you know, we will stand behind the impact report and the numbers that are in it, and it is, it is not outdated, but actually overstated in my opinion. Also, there were some questions on a property, and option two gives somebody the ability to sell their home to somebody that will remove it from the site, so they can receive all the relocation benefits offered, and payments and monies offered, and also get some additional monies in selling their home to somebody who moved it from the site. I believe that many homes will be sold, and people will pay to move them to different locations, maybe within a 150-mile radius, there'll be locations for some of the mobile homes. Not all of them, but some of them, definitely. So I wanted to bring that point up. Just want to make it clear that 1200 Newberry will do everything we can to ensure an amicable, professional, and a safe park closure and relocation. We will try to make the closure of Conejo Mobile Home Park as positive an experience as possible. And I think that's the best that I can do, is to try and make it a positive closure, and I hope that we go forward and do the right thing, and move forward with the closure. I hope the city council can accept and approve my impact report, as stated, and omit commission, omit condition number nine, paying benefits to non-resident owners, people that actually own a mobile home, but yet take advantage of rent control, low rents, and rent their mobile home to a third party for a profit. And that we will be able to get some funds that I have available in my impact report to those people, the actual people that will be relocating, that will be moving from a mobile home to another location, the renters that are renting mobile homes, that will rent another mobile home somewhere else, or rent a home somewhere else, or rent an apartment somewhere else. I'd like to see some money go to those people. And in my impact report, I do provide some relocation funds to those people. If we continue with condition number nine, there will be funds available to the actual investor-owner, and it may not go to the actual person relocating. There's, there's no guarantee that that person will afford any of those funds to the actual person relocating. I hope to make this, for everybody, as I stated before, as positive an experience as possible, and I believe we're ready to go forward. Thank you very much.
Questions of the applicant, appellate? Thank you, Mr. Bednar.
You're welcome.
There being no further questions of staff, all public testimony is in, all public comment. At this time, we will close the public hearing and open council discussion. Will of the council? Mrs. Irwin?
With all due respect to Mr. Bednar, I'm not sure how we can make any closure a positive experience. Just like we had to deal with Vallecito, this is a very tragic situation. I look up there, and I see hard-working people, families, kids, babies, people that are going to be left with mortgages, and really, there is no other word for it but tragic. There was a speaker that talked about us telling half-truths, and I really take exception to that. We adopted the initiative, but when we adopted it, I think all of us clearly stated that there would be portions of the initiative that the courts might find unenforceable, and I certainly think that that has... And I certainly think that that has come to fruition. The courts gave us no choice in this matter. We have to put the, we have to make a decision that does not put the rest of the city on the hook for potentially tens of millions of dollars. I have to listen to what our city attorney says. There are marginally better options. Mr. Fox talked about negotiating a settlement, perhaps a better settlement than we ended up with. And initially, as Mayor Gillette mentioned, we were looking at changing the zoning to allow moderate-income housing, and that potentially could have provided shelter for the residents of the Canejo. And unfortunately, I think politics prevented this. Now, I really hope that we can help these residents find housing, because as I have said three times already, this is a very tragic situation. With that, I am going to move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. I have a motion, move the staff recommendation. Comments to the motion? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we all repeat what Councilmember Irwin says in describing this as a tragic situation. There, it is indeed tragic. The state dodged the, their responsibility in not defining what reasonable cost of relocation They did the people a great disservice. In talking with the Housing Community Development people in Sacramento, they again dodge it. In order to obtain a definition, the city sued. The judge decided at the end of last year, and I think there are a lot of people that are very unhappy with what the judge's decision is. I think it would be, it would be very difficult to put 128,000 residents at risk of tens of millions of dollars of penalty. I will support the motion, but it's, it's not an easy support, but I think it is the thing to do.
Thank you. Additional comments to the motion? Mrs. Bildelapena?
I can certainly understand how lawmakers would grapple with such an issue. You have the issue of property rights, who has more rights, who is, who has more benefits, basically, in this case. It is a very decision to make. I sympathize with my colleagues, and I also sympathize with you. I went over and over and over this issue, and as Ms. Brenda Feldman said, we've come full circle. It, I remember, I recall, when we first held the public meetings on this, we did state, to some extent, that this would be fought, we would go as far as possible. I do recall that. And the threat of millions of dollars in damages is a major roadblock. And we've heard comments tonight about judges can make mistakes. Two cases were cited where judges actually sided with mobile home coach owners in Santa Cruz, for example, and in Carson, one of which I believe is being appealed. As a lawmaker, as a representative of constituents here in Thousand Oaks, we all have a responsibility. We obviously don't want to open up ourselves to millions of dollars in damages. I also believe we have an obligation, a moral obligation, to do what's right. And the closure report, to me, is really incomplete, because it does not, in my opinion, offer a reasonable cost of relocation to those families who will be displaced. That's simply not the case. And to think that you only have six months to go through this process, to go through this transition, and try to find something else, I don't know what you will be able to find in six months. Somebody here has waited four years to get into public housing. The closure impact report does not state where all of you will be going. Many of you have jobs here. You can't go to Orange County, 150 miles away. You have family. And when I think that we have money to purchase properties and then not have $3 million to help you with your transition, that, I find that hurtful personally. And I wish, and I hope that my, that this council will step up and be able to provide you funding. I am not going to approve the closure impact report. I feel personally that we should take it to the appeals court. That's the only place that we can know exactly how valid this initiative is. And perhaps that should have been the case with Vallesito as well. This impact is going to have, or this process is going to have a huge impact on affordable housing for seniors as well as disabled and other middle-income families, or low-income families, I should say, in Thousand Oaks, because this decision by a judge riser affects other mobile home parks in the city. It is with deep regret that I say that we have to come to this point, but we had to come to this point, one way or another. I do not once regret having fought for this initiative, not once. It was the right thing to do, because we had to try. We had to see, how far can we go? And so many of you worked so hard. And we were attacked for being political. I don't know how you can be attacked for wanting to help your fellow citizens. One of my dear friends was attacked and smeared by a city administration for helping you, because it was assumed she would be running for city council. And she never had a thought of running for city council, never. Now there are rumors going around that this had something to do with SOAR, and we must defeat SOAR, and other things. I mean, this is now being turned around against those who fought for the initiative, because it is an election year. Anyhow, enough has been said. I will not support this motion. I will vote against it, and I hope, I sincerely hope, I pray, that all of you will find housing in the city of Thousand Oaks. It breaks my heart to see that some of you might not. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight is one of those hearings that we come through and find a time that there really is no easy, easy fix. I think Ms. Feldman said it well, and a few others that we have come full circle. Sometimes the council's put into positions where we are a country of laws. The laws are written by our various legislatures. This city is required to follow the laws of the land, where they, in this case, is the state of California. In this particular case, the legislature wrote laws that clearly benefit mobile home park owners. There is, can be no dispute about that. In reading the legislative language, the laws were written with the intent to close mobile home parks in a way that would be, from the legislator's standpoint, fair and reasonable to the park owners. I would suggest that there was unintended consequences and unintended real-life, real-family issues that were not contemplated by the folks that go to work in Sacramento, and come home from time to time, and really don't need to look their constituents in the eye. That's the messy part of serving on a city council, is we have to look you in the eye and see you at the grocery store, see you at the kids' games, sometimes when we make votes that were not in your personal best interest. And it is a very difficult thing to do. We're also a part of representative government, and that's in part what brought us here today. Citizens went out, whether we agree or disagree, they started the initiative process, and they got a sufficient number of signatures to bring to the city council to change city law. And on the rare occasions for me where I went against my better judgment, because at the time I believed, as the city attorney advised, that the initiative was fraught with legal challenges, and at the time, I indicated to a very crowded council chamber that I was concerned about giving false hope in adopting this initiative. False hope in adopting this initiative. That there would be real families, real people, that would think that through the council's adoption, that somehow, all was well, all problems were solved. And I knew, and I think a number of us did, that that would not be the case. Notwithstanding, we adopted the initiative, it was challenged, and not only did we have a legislator that has told the council what to do, we now have a court that has opined on our interpretation of that and said, "You got it wrong. This is what you must do." We've had a number of mobile home issues that have come in front of the council, and it is clear, the court's track record as it relates to mobile home parks is very clear. They side on the part of the park owners. Mr. Mitnick pointed out that for us to move forward with a challenge, an appeal at this point, would be financially reckless. If you've watched the city council over the last several months, we have grappled with our budget, similar to many cities here in California and across the country. Just a few miles down the road, I watched Los Angeles City Councils grappling with some very, very difficult decisions, decisions in part made by their poor decisions over the last couple of years. This council cannot do that. We cannot put the city's financial health at risk on an appeal that our city attorney has told us is likely to fail. We simply can't put the city at risk. With respect to the process, I arguably am the closest of any member of the city council to this process, and I can remember going to community meetings and talking to the residents about the risk of moving forward and letting a court decide how much they would be paid for their individual mobile homes. And at the time, I indicated that anytime you go to court, there is a winner and there is a loser. And nobody knows who's going to win or lose when you go to court, but rest assured, when a judge makes a decision, there are winners and there are losers. A better approach would be to try to sit down and mediate between the park owners and the residents, some type of agreement that everybody would agree to. Thus came the mediation process. And I'm disappointed that our mediation was not successful, although we made tremendous strides during the course of mediation. At the end of the day, the amount that the residents were requesting and the amount that Mr. Bednar was willing to pay could not be met. And so here we are with a court's decision, and what I said two years ago, which is what we have today, staff would come up with a number. And it would be a number that Mr. Bednar would not agree to, and he does not. He's challenging the city's interpretation. And it would be a number that the park residents would not agree to, which is clearly the case. We had an opportunity to do something that I think would have been much more amenable, but unfortunately, that could not go through. So, I'm going to certainly support the motion. It is a difficult one. We do not have the answers. Some of the questions that were raised tonight, where will some of those folks go? This council does not have an answer for that. We are going to work with Many Mansions, but I think Ms. Irwin said it best, no matter how you look at this particular case, it is a tragedy.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. I will support the, I will support the motion. This is one of those times when it becomes especially difficult to take an action when you have a, when you have a pretty good idea of the negative impacts it will have on real people in our community. When this whole thing started, I did what I could at that time to work on the affordable side, the housing side of this, to try and ensure that there would be quality housing for income-eligible individuals in the park and a safe haven for them. Those options and those alternatives, even though we got all of the affordable housing providers involved, were rejected. And we moved on from that. Those were legitimate decisions that were made by people who felt that there were better alternatives. So now we find ourselves here this evening in a situation, given our current economic situation nationally, statewide, regionally, and locally, where I cannot support an action that would place the financial integrity of this municipality in jeopardy. I simply can't do it. So with that thought in mind, I will support the staff recommendation. Maker of the motion, concluding comment? There being none, please vote.
The vote shows a three to two with Councilmembers Bill de la Pena and Glancy dissenting. It's a four-one. Councilmember Bill de la Pena dissenting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you to the audience for your demeanor this evening. I know this was a very difficult hearing, and I appreciate the restraint that you exercised in getting us through it in a timely manner. The council will go into recess for about 15 minutes. Council is back in session. Item 9A, Department reports, exclusive refuse recycling and street-sweeping franchise. Mark Watkins, Mr. Watkins, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette, members of the city council, members of the public. The next item before you is consideration of exclusive refuse recycling and street-sweeping franchise, the term extension, and commercial solid waste rates. With me on the dais is Joanne Kelly. Joanne is the Division Manager for our Resource Division. And to Joanne's right is John Brooks. John is fairly new to the city. He is a senior analyst, taken over all of our environmental programs. So we're really happy to have John on board. Previously, John worked for, briefly for the County of Ventura, and before that, City of Palmdale, and before that, for the California Integrated Waste Management Board. So we're really, really pleased that John has joined us. Also with us tonight, we have Mike Smith from G.I. Industries, and Jim Harrison and Nan Drake from Harrison Industries. Industries, and Jim Harrison and Nan Drake from Harrison Industries. All of them available to answer any questions at the end. And so with that, the exclusive franchise agreements before you, the city does trash collection through the franchise agreements. Some cities choose to do their own trash hauling. Those that don't, the majority use franchise provisions, which is what we do here. The way our city is divided up is all of the commercial refuse hauling goes through G.I. Industries, and on the residential side, about 70% is with G.I. And then Newberry Disposal, which is Harrison, does about 30% of the residential. Our franchise agreements are written such that they have an evergreen provision. So we have the option every three years to either extend those franchises, to terminate them, and if we did terminate, then the residential contract would expire in 2015 and commercial in 2012. Or the option that the city typically chooses to negotiate an extension in exchange for additional services. That's what happened in this case. The concept of providing street sweeping as part of the solid waste franchises came up probably a little bit more than a year ago. That idea was also presented to the city council during the budget study session in May of 2009. At that time, we also discussed the potential increase in the franchise fees from 5% to 8%. Based on the budget study session, those assumptions were rolled into the adopted budget. And so in June of 2009, with the new budget, we did include the increase in franchise fees for this year for half a year, and also the street sweeping would go to the franchise haulers beginning halfway through the year. With the approval of the budget in June, we then started discussions with the haulers to write up these agreements. That took a little bit longer than we thought it would, and so we're here with you asking for approval of those tonight. If the franchise agreements are approved tonight, then street sweeping by the haulers would begin on March 1st. With the residential franchise agreements, the recommendation is to extend the agreement for three years, to adjust the franchise fee from 5% to 8%, and to incorporate the street sweeping services, as we previously discussed. The franchise fees are general fund revenue. That revenue was, and the 5% rate was established in the 1970s. And since that time, trash service has changed dramatically. We've added recycling and green waste bins in the 1990s, such that the franchise fees, which are, at least in part, to compensate the city for the additional wear and tear on the streets, have seen a threefold increase in truck traffic due to the additional services over that time. So it makes sense to increase the franchise fee for those reasons. By doing so, we'll realize about $100,000 in this fiscal year, just the remainder of the year, and then going forward, about $320,000 per year on the residential side. Currently, franchise fees vary throughout the county. Most cities are still at the 5% rate. Simi Valley is already at 8%, Moore Park is at 6%, and the surveying that we did on a statewide basis shows that they vary really widely across the state. Street sweeping, by having the franchise haulers do the street sweeping, there's really a number of advantages for the city. The first is an increased level of service. Currently, we sweep residential streets once per month, so 12 sweeps per year. This franchise would increase that by 60%, up to 19 sweeps per year. So what that would mean is that in the winter months, when you get rain, you get sweeping twice per month. So from September through April, you get swept twice per month, and then May through September, it'd be back to once per month. It also improves the stormwater quality. We're all very aware of the new stormwater permit and the requirements to keep trash out of the storm drains, and this will help us to meet those goals. And then finally, one of the things that the haulers were able to do that we weren't is to promise waste diversion. So they will take those street sweepings, they will screen them, and they've promised us that they will get 80% diversion. So really, three major advantages to having the street sweeping done by them. Looking at, just very quickly, a chart of how the other cities perform street sweeping. A number of cities do street sweeping in-house. A number of cities already contract them out. Of those that do it in-house, there's five of those. Three of them are currently paying for that, using their solid waste fees. And then with Thousand Oaks, if that's approved tonight, then we would be the fourth. And then the others that are using either a combination of general fund or gas tax funds to pay for it. So the street sweeping specifications, we'd require 19 sweeps per year. We also require that they coordinate their street sweeping with the trash pickup. And in addition to that, we get a 500-hour time bank for what we call unscheduled sweeps. So in the past, various events around town, including traffic accidents, the occasional parade, special events, whatever else, we end up providing sweeping services. They'll take over those responsibilities also, to try to put some sort of a scope of work on that so that that can be estimated. For their behalf, we came up with this 500-hour time bank. Street sweeping does provide a tremendous benefit. It's not just a benefit to you and your front yard, but it's an overall benefit to the community. So as you try to quantify the benefit, oftentimes people think about how often it passes, really just in front of my house. But by keeping the trash out of the storm drains, it's a general benefit to the entire city. Three to four tons of debris are removed from city streets daily, a little over 2,000 tons a year. So that's a lot of material that gets picked up. The impact from a rate perspective, our current rates are 26.61 per month. This would include, with street sweeping, it would include an extra dollar per month, and an increase in the franchise fee would be 67 cents. So about 3.8% increase for street sweeping, 2.5% for the franchise, for a total of about a 6.3% increase. Typically, on any given year, we also have a CPI increase. There will be no CPI increase for 2010. And then in exchange for the three-year extension, the haulers have also agreed to a half percent reduction in the CPI increase for 2011 and 2012. And so the increase for the sweeping and the franchise will be at least partially offset by a reduction in the CPI increases, both this year and for the next two years. And then comparing our rates, it's really like we talked about with water rates and others in the past. It's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison. And the reason for that is because different cities have different service levels. Different cities are situated differently in regards to the location of landfills, and where you haul, and how you sort, and what you do has a big impact on those rates. But nonetheless, here's the trash rates for some of our surrounding communities. Thousand Oaks ends up being in the middle of the pack, maybe slightly on the high side after increasing the franchise and the sweeping. We are still, and will continue to be, lower than the unincorporated areas within the city. So even after providing those street sweeping provisions and increasing, the franchise fee will be lower than the others, and then just slightly higher than Westlake, Camarillo, and Moore Park. On the commercial side, the recommendation is similar, in that we recommend a three-year extension and the same increase in the franchise fee and street sweeping. That franchise fee will end up being about $70,000 this year for the remainder of the year, a couple hundred thousand dollars per year after that. All of these combined with the decrease in the city's costs of street sweeping and the increase in the franchise fee ends up being over $1 million to the city between the two of them. Commercial sweeping is done weekly, and so you'll see weekly sweeping in the commercial areas, same requirements as in the residential franchises as far as performance standards. And the trash haulers will be coordinating their sweeping services. What this means is that there's one vendor that will service the entire city. What that requires is for our two franchise haulers, Harrison and G.I., to coordinate amongst themselves how the sweeping gets done. And this is where, you know, some of the time went in, as we discussed this with them after the budget was passed, how it would be accomplished. Because it would have been difficult if we had different haulers, hiring different folks, and performing the different sweeping in one area. And so to make it all easier, they've chosen to hire one vendor jointly, so we'll have that one vendor sweeping all the streets citywide for consistency. Now, the way that affects commercial rates, as shown in the next slide, commercial rates vary quite a bit because they can have different numbers of bins and different numbers of frequency of pickups per week. So we just chose a typical three-yard bin that's collected once per week. In that case, the street sweeping adds about 6.5%, 6.6%, and the franchise fee increase adds about 3.2%. And then they also have a small increase in their solid waste management fee. The net to all of those is about a 10% increase on the commercial side. So the commercial increase is slightly larger than residential. We think that's fair. We looked at revenues from the commercial and residential perspective. Commercial also gets swept 52 times per year or weekly, as opposed to 19 for residential. And then the overall potential for generating the waste is much higher within the commercial area. So it seemed reasonable. So all that being said, the city staff recommends adopting the resolution, approving the amended and restated exclusive franchise agreements with both G.I. and Newberry Disposal, and we're more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Questions of staff? Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Watkins, does currently the city have any target for the conversion of street sweeping debris into the recycle category? Or what do we do with what we pick up?
At this point, when the city does the sweeping, it all goes into the trash. And so it's being disposed of as rubbish. With the new franchise, we'll get that 80% recycled that will occur.
Thanks.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Watkins, looking really quick, you said we're going from 12, on the sweeping issue, we're going from 12 times a year to 16, I'm sorry.
19.
To 19 times a year. With that increase, is there any focus on trying to increase those during times of the year? I know we have, as an example right now, we have a number of development-imposed plantings, tree plantings, that this time of year, the fruitless trees in particular, are shedding on a regular basis, putting a lot more stuff on the streets and in the rain gutters. Is there any provision to accommodate when there's more volume and less, or is that just unrealistic?
Well, we've got the 500-hour time bank that allows us to hit certain areas as we want to. I think the street sweepers will be sensitive to those areas that have leaf drop. There's also provision that requires them to put out bins in certain areas. So we have certain parts of town, it's primarily in the fall, where you just get a tremendous amount of leaf drop all at one time, both private and public. And at times, what people do in the past is they take their leaf blowers or whatever, and just kind of blow everything into the street for us to pick up. So in those, some of those neighborhoods, what we've done in the past is put bins out so that people could have a place to get rid of all that extra debris. And there are provisions in this for the haulers to do the same. And I don't remember how many bins it was, do you recall?
Twenty-five loads.
Okay, so 25 loads or 25 bins that get placed strategically around the city at different times for some of the areas that have more leaf drop than others.
Okay, because there's certain, depend on seasonal, certain seasons create more need, and the winds, the trees, the foliage dropping, those types of things. And I guess my thought was, are those schedules adjusted to accommodate those fluctuations in seasonal activity?
Yeah, they can. The other thing that happens is typically when it's raining, there is no sweeping going on. And so there's, you know, some credit that can accrue from those rainy times, and you can kind of play catch-up at other times. So you do have some flexibility there.
Okay. And if I understood correctly from your report, our vendors, G.I./Waste Management and Harrison, they'll hire a third contractor to do this, or will they be their employees?
Yeah, they are jointly hiring a third contractor. So there'll be one contractor, it's Venco Sweeping, it does a lot of sweeping up here already, they will sweep the entire city. So they're coordinated with that one contractor to sweep the entire city.
Okay, and where will Venco, where will they be domiciled? Where will they keep their equipment and what have you?
Ultimately, their goal is to have their equipment up here and close by. I think currently, their equipment's in Camarillo, and we can have these folks comment further. But I think their goal is to have their equipment closer by so they don't have a lot of dead time.
Well, that's what I was wondering, in the event of an accident or something like that, or a major spill, if the equipment's needed, it's no longer responding from the corpyard out on Rancho Cano, how long does it increase the delay to get it out to assist the emergency providers?
Right, they've got minimum response times. One of the things I can mention also, we do have a transition period kind of built into this, because they're starting, you know, from zero. And so we also included in the first three years that they can continue to use our dump sites. So we currently dump at our service center, and we also have a site off of Herb's Road that we, by our pump station, it's owned by the Cano Park and Rex District. So we made those sites available to them for the first three years. We're also working with them very, very close over the first several months to make sure the transition is very seamless. So the goal is that ultimately, the entire service is provided by the franchise haulers as part of the requirements of their franchise, but there's kind of this transition period. As part of that transition is when Venco will also be trying to find yard space up here and locate all of their sweepers closer. So in that first period of time, there may be some commute. We're also keeping at least one city sweeper, so we'll have the ability to do sweeps. If that situation comes up, we'll keep at least one of ours.
I was going to ask you if there will be some redundancy or some backup with retention of a piece of city equipment and qualified operators for it and what have you.
Yes.
Was any consideration given to Venco, maybe going into some sort of lease arrangement at the corpyard with the expanded property we have out there?
Yeah, there was a number of discussions about our equipment, whether they wanted our equipment. Our equipment's all CNG, and so there's the issue where they would fill it if they would continue then to fill the service center, if they had other equipment they wanted. Ultimately, they decided that they would prefer to proceed with the equipment that they own and to buy new equipment and not buy all ours. And so we're getting rid of the pieces we have. We'll go through the auction process to get rid of the unnecessary equipment. We'll keep probably our newest sweeper.
Okay, that was, and that was.
There was a lot of discussion on that.
That was the final question, since we've made such strides in getting environmentally friendly, or as friendly as possible, equipment through CNG equipment. Will this be comparable equipment, or will we be going back to diesel?
Yeah, the requirements are, I don't remember the exact wording, Joanne, you can help me if you want, but it calls for clean air, diesel, alternative fuels, it gives them more flexibility than just CNG. But there has been great strides made in the diesel emissions also.
That's fine, the issue's been addressed then.
Right, there was a lot of discussion on that too.
Anything, any other questions of staff? Well, what's your pleasure, folks? Oh, I have two speaker cards, both con. They don't think this is a good idea because the city doesn't spend its money properly. There are no other speakers. Mr. Fox?
Sure. I'm going to move for approval of this staff recommendation. And I think it's noteworthy that at a time when city services are being cut and reduced through the good work of our city staff, that we are increasing a city service that goes to the very heart of your quality of life, and that is getting your streets cleaned and your trash repiling picked up. And as the staff report points out, an increase of 60% in getting your streets swept. And so in a time when we're struggling to provide good, high-quality city services, this is something that I hope we certainly market well, that through the good work of our city staff, we're going to be increasing, really, I think, one of the clear-cut services that people look for in terms of municipal government and/or giving it to the private sector. And then while we have our representatives here from the trash haulers, just want to pass on thanks to you guys for the good work that you do. I know that's your business. But I'll tell you, if things go awry, we hear about it. And it's a rarity that, at least for this council member, that I get a phone call regarding a complaint or anything like that. You guys have done a very, very good job. I note here in the staff report that we, just as a reminder to the public, that we increased way back in 19, the 1990s, the increase of green waste, recycling, and I don't know what our percentage of trash that we're no longer taking to a landfill, but maybe, Mr. Watkins, you can comment on that. I know we're well above.
We're right around 60%.
Right. 60% of our trash is being diverted from the landfill.
Is being diverted.
Just incredible, incredible job. So just a good job all the way around from everybody. So I'm pleased to support the motion.
Okay, Mrs. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. I actually wanted to see if it is proper to ask a question of the representatives here tonight.
We don't have cards in, but all the latitude.
Thank you, just a brief question. If it is at all in the works to include a hazardous waste disposal in the future as part of this?
Why don't we, I'll tell you what, why don't we direct that through Mr. Watkins?
Ah, Mr. Watkins, okay.
And then if Mr. Watkins wants to call on one of them.
Thank you.
Brief answer is no. As far as curbside pickup, we still do our household hazardous waste events on a monthly basis. We do the small business, all that stuff. But we're not doing those curbside, and there is no provision within this to do at curbside.
Okay. I will support the motion. I just, for the record, would like to state that I did receive a phone call from Waste Management on a survey, but as soon as they found out that I was a member of the city council and a member of the media, they declined to interview me. Thank you.
Hmm, well, there's no comment, Mr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that the diversion of 80% of the street sweeping into recycle is really pretty slick. And the fact that the street sweepers have to be state-of-the-art equipment, which really improves our stormwater quality, and that will have effects down the road in terms of financial effects. But it'll be my pleasure to support the motion.
Thank you. Anything further? Just an observation, Nan, were you mayor of Ventura during your time? Nan, were you mayor of Ventura during your time? Council member? No, not just a council member. Nan Drake is a former City of Ventura council member and works now with Harrison as a... Pardon?
Trash queen.
No, I didn't, see, I didn't. I have the pleasure of working with Nan regularly through the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. It's a pleasure working with her. So, okay. Mr. Fox, maker of the motion?
No.
Thank you. Motion, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item 10A, redevelopment agency report. Give everybody a chance to reshuffle up there. Mr. Hatcher, you're on.
Chair Gillette, board members. We're here before...
No, this, Mr. Hatcher, this is not the planning commission, this is city council. I'm not the chair.
Well, we're addressing you as the redevelopment agency.
I see. Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Just making sure that we're making that distinction clear.
No, that, thank you. Made it with me.
So we're here before you this evening requesting approval of a $500,000 loan to Mini Mansions for their Hillcrest apartment project. This is a project that's located on Hillcrest Drive and is presently addressed as 2636 to 2736 Hillcrest, and also one parcel on Los Feliz 2645. This is a three-acre parcel that's slated for development as the 60-unit affordable housing project. And just as way of background, you funded acquisition of these parcels in two actions with a total amount of 5.55 million, some of which was devoted to pre-development costs. You approved entitlements and the owner participation agreement in June of last year. And the purpose of the loan request before you tonight is to fund architectural and engineering costs associated with this project. And the reason for that is that Mini Mansions is pursuing funding for this project, and as you've seen in the attachments to the report, the sources are many. And they've presently been awarded home funds, but they've also learned that they will not be receiving those funds until later in the summer. And also because of a change in regulation regarding NEPA clearance, they're unable to encumber the property to secure financing to fund the architectural costs. The reason why this is important is that they are applying for tax credits, which is the bulk of the financing mechanism for this project, and that application is due in March. And they're hopeful of receiving an award in, I believe, June, a reservation of credits. And one of the categories that is, goes towards scoring these, this is very competitive for 9% tax credits, is project readiness. And if they're able to demonstrate that they can be construction-ready within 150 days of the credit reservation, then that'll help their ability to compete for those. Now, we've built in the ability for them to apply for tax credits in more than one round, but we would like to go forward with this request because it would allow them to commence construction as early as November of this year, well in advance of the timetable set forth in the owner participation agreement. So just very briefly, the terms of the loan before you, the loan would be for a one-year period of time, no more. It's at a 0% interest rate unless there were to be a default, in which case the interest rate would be 10%. And the loan would be secured by an interest in Mini Mansions' Shadow Hills property, which has ample equity to support this loan. So in conclusion, we're recommending that you approve this loan amount of $500,000 and authorize the appropriate appropriation and expenditures associated with this action. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of staff? Ms. Bill Dillupin.
Thank you. My question is, when is this project expected to be completed?
Well, ideally, if they commence construction in November of 2010, it would be completed November of 2011. Now, the agreement that we have with them actually sets forth the ability to meet the terms. They would have to submit for building permits by December of this year, be under construction by June of 2011, and be complete by June of 2012. So if they're able to receive the funding award for credits, they'll be able to commence construction in advance of the timetable that we set up.
Okay, thank you. I hope that that will be beneficial to some of the other residents in town that are about to be displaced. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Irwin.
Can you, what happens if they're not awarded the tax credits?
Well, they will have the ability to apply again. And they're very competitive. I don't mean to convey that they're not, but there is a lot of competition for these 9% credits. So the project readiness category, they'll receive a certain number of points if they're able to show or meet all of the criteria in that category. Now, if for some reason they weren't awarded credits in this round, I believe the funding cycles are every six months, so they could reapply. And we actually set up the schedule of performance in the owner participation agreement to kind of anticipate that if they were unable to receive funding in one round, they'd have the ability to apply again. Because oftentimes, if you don't receive funding in one round, you can tweak your application and do certain things that will ensure that you're near the top of the list the next time around.
Okay, nothing. We have available for questions only, Mr. Stephen, and I hope it's Jeffreyon, who's the architect on the project, available for questions only, and Mr. Rick Schrader, executive for Mini Mansions. Good evening, Mr. Schrader. Any questions? Okay, pleasure of the council. Mr. Fox?
Sure, I'm going to move the recommendation to, one, approve the redevelopment agency, that's us.
Oh.
Mr. Gillette.
Thank you.
Loan, $500,000 to Mini Mansions for pre-development costs related to the Hillcrest Drive project, and two, authorize the budget appropriation to, and expenditure of $500,000 from the associated accounts to accomplish that. The public doesn't have the benefit of the staff report, but it struck me while I was reviewing this, just the increased complexity of these projects. And I know from time to time, the representatives have talked about it, but I just, just a quick note of the good work that the staff does and Mini Mansions and some of the other housing advocates and agencies in really maximizing all the different programs that are available, and the time constraints and the competitiveness and everything else, and then the level of projects that we have here in Thousand Oaks. The affordable housing that we're able to provide is certainly not by accident, and it's the result of a lot of good work from not just the city, but also the Mini Mansions and the associated agencies. So good job, and we look forward to ribbon cutting here down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Comments to the motion? Ms. Bill Dillupin.
I wish I could say my vote depends on whether you can provide affordable housing to all of these other mobile home residents, but I can't say that. But I will support the motion anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments to the motion? There are none. Mr. Fox, maker of the motion? Additional comments? Okay, council, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 11, committee, commission, board reports, we have none. Council issues and recommendations? Item 12, we have none. City manager, follow-up requests from the public and announcements on coming issues? Item 13.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up, early this evening, under public comments, an individual expressed a desire to see a 24-hour-a-day pharmacy. And since then, staff has, Gary Wartek in particular, our economic development manager, did do some research, and we're not sure if there is a 24-hour pharmacy, but he did find out that the Walgreens that just opened on Vinton Park Road was approved and allowed to have a 24-hour pharmacy should it decide to do so. And at this point, we believe it's open till midnight. They have the option to have a drive-through open 24 hours, or have, I guess, in the store 24 hours. And right now, it doesn't, the demand does not appear to be there, but we will follow up with Walgreens and find out where they are, because they're testing the water, and if the market's there, they will, they are able to open 24 hours. The, our economic development manager did speak with the speaker tonight. We'll follow up and get back to council. Okay, with respect to our next council meeting, that will take place on February 23rd. At this point, we have one public hearing scheduled. It's a municipal code amendment dealing with oak tree protection and preservation standards. And the one department report that we have at this time, and this will be the main agenda item, is the current budget year, fiscal year 2019, the mid-year budget report. So the council finance committee has already had a meeting on this subject. We'll come back to you, we'll tell you where things stand at this point in the fiscal year, and what type of reductions that we're looking at to get through this year and end up with a balanced budget. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitnick. Item 14, closed session, we have none this evening. Item 15, at this time, we will adjourn to the regular meeting of February 23rd, 2010. We're adjourned.